Uh, the conference meeting is now begun. Uh, before we begin the regular agenda, I just wanna say a few comments. As we all know, the city of Fort Lauderdale uh was inundated with a very unusual rainstorm uh this past few days. And uh, and I, and I think for the, for the public, we should give a summary of what has gone on and what continues to go on. And uh, to let the folks of the community know the efforts that we have been able to accomplish as this uh, as this uh rainfall, this, they say one in a thousand year rainfall. Uh, how we're responding to it and how we continue to respond to it. So on Wednesday, April twelfth last week is when I issued a state of emergency. Uh, in order to immediately respond to the emergency that we were, we were suffering uh for that day. Every municipality in Broward County, as well as the city of Miami, the Broward Sheriff's Office and many others have since assisted us in efforts to respond to this emergency situation. Our emergency operations center, the E O C, the nerve center during emergencies such as this was activated that Wednesday evening and remains active now. Our team has rescued or relocated approximately nine hundred people who were either stranded or trapped by water, including six hundred people the very first night. The total number is an estimate as there has been a high volume of emergency calls and not all rescues have been reported as of yet. Cities Conference Stations first set up on April thirteenth and April fourteenth are open and ready to serve our neighbors. Following two locations are open from seven A M. to seven P M. each day. That's Shirley Small Park at twelve thirty southwest thirty uh Fourth Avenue. That's Shirley Small Park, twelve thirty southwest thirty Fourth Avenue. The Broward County Fleet Service Center at twenty five fifteen Southwest Fourth Avenue. And services there that are, the services there that are offered are water, food, restaurants, charging station, shut, and showers. We have a new location that replaces one that was previously at Providence Park. And that will be serving food and water only. This is at the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church located on Sistrum Boulevard thirteen twenty one, that's thirteen twenty one Northwest Sixth Street. We partnered with the Red Cross to establish shelters at Holiday Park and now also First Presbyterian Church. Currently, there are fifty-three people who are being served at these locations. At its height, we're serving a hundred and ten people. To date, the Red Cross has distributed six thousand four hundred thirteen meals to residents as well as six hundred and forty cleanup kits and more than nineteen hun- hundred other emergency assistance items. Transportation and mobility staff have established shuttle service in the hard-hit Edgewood neighborhood. Make neighbors there with our shelter and comfort center locations. There is a circuit shuttle making a continuous loop through Edgewood to bring residents to the Comfort Center at Broward Fleet. There's also an express route to the Holiday Park Red Cross Shelter location. All residents need to do is wave the shuttle down and it will stop for them. And we have also established a free on-demand service for those hard-hit areas to take residents to locations for essential services such as grocery stores, pharmacies, laundromats, banks, and regional transportation centers. Uh, residents can call or text the following number to be connected to a driver. It's five six one, seven six two, oh four seven nine. I will repeat that. It's five six one, seven six two, oh four seven nine. So regarding debris management and pickup, we've had thirty-six pumping and vacuum trucks in operation at our peak. And with thirteen cities stepping up to provide resources and support, I can't thank our neighboring cities for the uh, for the uh, really the, the yeoman's effort that they have made to provide not just these uh vacuum trucks, but all kinds of assistance to our city. Everywhere north is Pointon Beach down to Miami-Dade. The vacuum trucks have a capacity to remove up to five thousand gallons of water at a time. There are twenty crews with pressure washers removing flooding settlement from sidewalks and driveways to ensure public safety. Debris collection began yesterday and efforts have ramped, been ramped up since. Expect this work to be completed as soon as this Friday. So whatever you have that is uh, that is debris from the flooding, please put it out on your curb. Do not put it in the swale uh because of that will prevent absorption of water. It's still waters, is still there. Uh, we need to make sure that your debris is picked up, so please try to get it out there by Friday. Today, we have trucks circulating in all the areas that have been impacted. And those trucks will be getting, removing the, the flood-related debris. These trucks will operate only during daylight hours for safety purposes, and they will make multiple passes in the areas that have been affected. Our team is distributing debris guidelines in English, Spanish, and Creole to help neighbors with the process for debris pickup. Neighbors should stay tuned for more information as this recovery effort continues. So those are my initial remarks, and I just want to take a moment, a point of personal privilege to, to thank uh, all of our first responders, especially those who are firefighters. I want to thank Chief Golin for uh the amazing efforts that his department has made in helping us through this effort. Uh, I've spoken to him many times personally over the last several days and uh he's kept me up to date on, on the progress that he's been able to make. I also want to thank our police department also handling the uh, the rescue efforts as well as maintaining order. As many of the cars that were strewn in, in our streets and the flooded areas were being recovered. And to uh make the pathways, Broward Boulevard, Andrews, um State Road eighty-four, places that uh we saw quite a few vehicle accumulations, uh want to thank the police department for helping us through those areas. You know, it's not always that we're gonna receive a, a world system like this. They say once in a thousand years, but uh they said two years ago that the rainstorm we had there was once in five hundred years. I thought we had a couple hundred years uh to work on our drainage systems. Apparently, um, the good Lord thought otherwise. But the reality is that this community really came together. I'm extremely proud of our residents who helped other residents, neighbors helping neighbors. Uh, we had no deaths, no serious injuries. Uh, and it's only because of how we together as a community have been able to come together and, and to achieve a, a result that today we can be very proud of. You know, um, we have visitors from our sister city from Duisburg, Germany who arrived last night. And um, um, they said they didn't know what to expect when they came here. They saw the news all the way back home, how, how this rain event is the largest in the state of Florida in its history and perhaps one of the largest in the entire country. And they expected to see a flooded uh city with impassable streets and uh, and people uh crying out for help. And when they got here, they saw absolutely no evidence whatsoever of any of that. Their first response to me was, you have an amazingly resilient city. And while I, you know, I can appreciate those words as we see the center of our city completely dried and restored. We know that there's still neighborhoods that are still in dire need of our help and we can't overlook. Our city, the change to make efforts, sad irony of this. Sad irony of this is that in some of those infected areas like North Sea Riverbed and Edgewood and Shady Banks where at Melrose, Melrose Manor, uh where we were really hard hit. Those are the areas that we have already engaged stormwater improvement programs and uh, and we will continue to do that. But even with those programs, if they had been fully completed and, and, and fully operational, they still would not have been able to accommodate the amount of rain that this um, uh rainstorm uh fell upon our city. All we can do is try to take the pain less painful. And uh, and I think that uh, the decisions that the commission made uh several years ago to fund these operations uh couldn't have come any sooner. Um, and hopefully we can work together as a community to make uh Fort Lauderdale still the best place in Florida to live. So, having said that, um, uh, let's go on to the commission meeting. Uh, and I think that uh, we have a number of things to talk about this afternoon.
Mayor, before we go into.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Who, um, the agenda, I would like, hold on one second. I want to make a motion that we table this agenda that's written and discuss the first priority, which is the storm flood waters, storm flood, the stormwater flooding in our districts to um, three and four is very important that we talk about this. I don't think we will be doing um, the citizens of the city overall any good by uh moving forward without addressing this more in detail.
Yes, I think it's a good idea. Go, we're not gonna table it. We'll just, why don't we just, we'll get to it, but why don't we hear your concerns and your thoughts? And let's see, let's address this now. So why don't you go ahead?
Okay, alright, so, okay. Alright, so, first of all, I, I, I have to say that these last six days have been horrific. It has been viewed as a commission that is inexperienced and it's also been shameful of what has been going on. We, we recognized that a storm was coming and we did minimal to prepare for it. And then after that, we had the problem with getting um, attention to those areas that were flooded and still are flooded in our district. Um, in District Three, talking about Melrose Manor, which we know is still um, waiting for drainage overall. And the question that I keep getting and I don't understand is what, why isn't it that we, the city, has pushed forward on this project to get the storm drains in the ground for these communities? And my problem with all of this is seems to be that it's okay. And, and Mayor, you just made a statement that I really know is inappropriate. You said that um, this last storm in twenty twenty was deemed a five-year, five-hundred-year storm. And we figured that we had two hundred years to do something inappropriate. People are sitting right now with water up to their knees in their houses. They don't know what they're gonna do. I have people telling me they can't even afford to come back from this. They're gonna have to move out of their homes because they cannot repair it. And then where are they gonna go? There's nowhere in this county and this city for them to go because of the affordable housing issues that we have. Now, as a commission, I want to know what we're gonna do. I want to see personally where we come together and put together a proper preparation plan. What we're seeing is a fix-it-as-you-go. And we shouldn't work like that. And I'm not gonna continue to work like that. If I have to stand as District Three and prepare a plan, bringing together um, city um, through this, the city manager appointing individuals to make a plan, this is what we gotta do. Because right now, this is sad. I'm disappointed to see that we called a state of emergency in our city and it was also called in the county. And then there was still activities going on that one side of the city was um, in a sense embracing what was a festival, a, a, a celebration where the other side of the city was trying to figure out how they were going to get out of their homes because they could not drive. They had water up to their waist. So tell me, why is this okay? I don't, I'm, I'm very upset about this. And I even, I, I had said I was gonna really make sure I did not say the wrong thing today. Cause when I tell you that I'm heartbroken for the district, also for Edgewood, it makes no sense. And I know that it's been deemed a thousand-year um storm. But however, we have to be prepared for these types of things. So, I want to know, okay, what are we gonna do today to fix this? Because the problems that I encountered over these last six days is not acceptable, okay? I received phone calls from, to receive help for the district from um Broward County, the mayor, Lamar, um Lamar Fisher, from the District Commissioner, Robert McKenzie, Congressman Sheila, um Sheffield McCormick. People calling me to find out what is going on and why we're not moving in a certain direction. It was said that we were not uh following proper protocol. There was no paper trail. We were not asking the right people as a city for help. The Salvation Army reached out to me. They've wanted to know where they could send um their canteens to feed the district. I told them that. Also, we had a problem with um, just communication. I'm trying to figure out, we have an E O C. Why isn't the commission at that table? Why is the staff running that? We need to be, I don't need information third-hand. If there's a discussion about what's gonna be fixed and, and done in my district, I want to be at the table. Every time I called Greg, he gave me information. However, why am I not at the table? Why isn't Warren at the table? These two districts were immediately affected about what was going on in our district. And everything we received came third-hand. Today, I'm still asking, I had to ask again today, where are the trucks in Melrose Park? Where are they in Melrose Manor? For days, I've been getting, oh, they're nine out, they're six out. Where are they in the district? I'll get back with you. Today was the first day that I was able to get the location of where these trucks are. Unacceptable, unacceptable. And then on top of that, the members in this community, just like every part of this city, taxpayers, they're doing what they're supposed to do and they're not receiving the service as needed. We need to fix this. Now, I want to start with city manager. I want to start with um, assistant, assistant managers. Everyone in order. We need to fix this. This should never happen again. Embarrassing. It's shameful in the way that this was handled.
Anyone have, like, to respond to that? Anyone like, any, any, anyone else on the commission have any comments? Okay, um, cause I know that there were other commissioners who were engaged. I know uh Commissioner Dr. Sturman was engaged. He participated in a lot of the recovery efforts. Uh, and I know that I myself was also on the ground uh trying to participate, certainly trying to stay out of the way of our staff. But uh, since most of your comments were directed to the city manager, I'd like the city manager now to respond.
Sure. So Vice Mayor, I can understand your sentiment and the frustration that this was caused, just as it's caused uh, many of our neighboring agencies and many of our neighboring cities. This is a very unique storm. On Wednesday, when storms uh were continuous and rain was continuous, I went out with Chief Golin as early as five P M. into some of the vulnerable areas. Uh, we went out to look at the conditions uh during rush hour traffic and found that there was gridlock. Uh, we immediately uh contacted our county partners to uh put a priority on the signalization so that cars could get out of the city. And we started putting out messaging as early as six P M. with uh public service announcements with the chief up to his knees in water, telling everyone to stay home and stay out of traffic. And we also sent that to the commission and we sent out text messages letting them know, letting the commission know that there were hazards and there were, uh, there was a, a lot of storm event. And uh, because of the activity, we were saying the same message to the city commission. We assembled as early as nine P M. in the E O C. And we took over uh our function as emergency management. Emergency management is an administrative function. It's an administrative function that is led by our miss, our emergency management coordinator, Chief Fraser. And we follow the NIMs process and we declared an emergency as early as eleven P M. Eleven P M. on Wednesday. And that emergency allowed us to take uh into effect certain actions to mitigate mitigate impact uh and put, protect the public safety of individuals. Uh, during that time, we contacted our partners such as Broward Sheriff's Office, the Florida Wildlife uh Commission, and they provided us up to eight boats and also buggies that allowed us to rescue people that were trapped in homes in Edgewater. And we were, we're certainly following the emergency management plan that we have in place. But this is, this was an event that no storm sewer system could have uh prevented it uh or mitigated the storm activity that we experienced. I want everyone to realize that we experienced twenty-six inches in five hours. Our storm sewer systems are designed, the best ones are designed for dissipating water three inches every twenty-four hours. I want to say that every step of the way, we're providing information. I want to say that we had as much as thirty-six trucks pumping out water in the vulnerable spots. And of course, Melrose Park and Melrose Manor was part of that priority. And that very, but uh, as soon as day broke, we certainly went out. And, and even before that, we were out at five A M. with Chief Golin and Chief Fraser. And we were helping people that were rescued at the Wind Dixie by State Road eighty-four and making sure that the Red Cross was able to assist them. The Red Cross landed in, or at least arrived at, in Fort Lauderdale at five thirty A M. But we did take uh measures to assess and also direct some of these pump trucks that were coming in from neighboring cities. And also our county partners allowed us to get additional resources. And we also were able to get assistance from the, from the state. And Director Guthrie, who is the, the head or the director of emergency management, also qualified this very unique uh situation incident that he never would have thought uh would have uh been experienced here. And also, uh, I want you to know that uh, that in the public as well, that uh, this impacted our neighboring cities as well. The Fort Lauderdale International Airport uh was offline for two days and it looked like a lake. And again, it was because of the activity, of the storm activity that hovered over these very specific part of Fort Lauderdale uh for an extended amount of time. So what I want to say is that we continue uh the NIMs uh to follow the NIMs, the federal NIMs guidelines for emergency management. And we do uh continue to provide direction to our resources in those areas. We, every day since the storm, we have had our E O C. open with uh thirty or more people. And again, this is an administrative function which we do not have elected officials uh or policymakers involved. Because this is a very specific task that has ample training and ample plans in place so that we can again mitigate loss and also do recovery assistance. And we were in District Three uh as early as Thursday, setting up a comfort center which has showers, has water, has sandbags, and also has uh charging stations for individuals that uh were impacted by the storm. So I want to say that within twenty-four hours, there was assistance at District Three and even uh quicker than uh in Edgewood. And that is just the logistics that took place. Uh, but I can also show you, we have a map that we can sha- share which shows that the severe impacted uh homes or the major impacted homes as qualified by FEMA are in the Edgewood area. And we have inspectors today that are uh going to home by home, assessing the damage. And we have individuals in the Edgewood area as well that also uh require assistance. But throughout um our, our past six days, as you, as you've mentioned, it has been a very uh, a, a very impactful event. Uh, I, I am very proud of the team. I am proud of the staff that has uh, some have slept and has, have lived in the E O C. uh, round the clock. And they continue and they provide direction. They, they are answering phone calls from the public and making sure that priority is placed on those locations that have been severely impacted. So what are we doing to fix this? We have two hundred thousand dollars worth of storm sewer systems that are underway.
Two hundred million.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred million dollars worth of storm sewer projects. In fact, one is in Melrose Manor. And I can also give more, I, I can also ask uh Director Dodd to provide more information about what is being done in Melrose Manor and Melrose Park as a long-term solution for uh the, the storm mitigation of what we experienced. Uh, Director Dodd, can you assist this?
Before, um Dodd speaks, please, there was a couple of things that I want to um clarify because um, Thursday, I've been walking this as well uh with you, Greg. You know, we've been talking every day. Um, Thursday morning, um, seven A M., um, yes, um, I had asked for police to come out. That did happen. I'm appreciative to that. They took me through the district to see what was going on. And yes, I was able to tell, um, give a report back to you and those that were at E O C. To know where those high levels were. Um, initially, you, you said that there was thirty-six trucks. The thirty-six trucks, that number didn't arrive until Sunday. Okay, Thursday, there was eight. And then um Saturday, there was an additional one that made nine. So what you, you know, that part of it is not completely accurate because it was Thursday, eight trucks, Saturday, nine trucks, and then we began to see the influx of more trucks that came out. Also, and regarding um, when the comfort stations were set up. Comfort sessions were not set up until Saturday. They were not set up on Thursday. It was Saturday. Also, um, and, and, and reference to, um, how many, um, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor, let me add, Vice Mayor, let me interrupt you for just a second. What is your point with regard to the pump trucks?
My point is we were not prepared. Regardless of.
For this, for this storm that, that very rarely materializes, did you want the city to uh, to buy a fleet of thirty-six pump trucks to have on hand? Is that what you're recommending?
No, I'm not recommending that we buy um a fleet of trucks, but what I am recommending, that we have them on haul. Speed dial, because we are getting ready to get ready for hurricane season and we're gonna see this again in six weeks. And what are you gonna tell those people? What are you gonna do?
What are you gonna tell those people? Luckily, luckily Vice Mayor, that we have neighbors that responded as quickly as they did. And during a hurricane season, these people are not gonna respond to us. They're gonna have their own issues. So it just so happens that the storm was located within the boundary, boundaries. Broward County area. And that we, I thank God that Miami-Dade, that Pointon Beach, that Delray, Boca, Pompano all responded the way they did in such, such a short period of time. I don't know where you get your information from, but it's, it's, it's completely unfounded. We, we were able to get responses as soon as they were available. We reached out immediately to these, to these adjacent cities. They didn't snap to it just because we asked them. They had to coordinate within their own cities. They had to coordinate with, we had to coordinate with our county. It doesn't just happen that way. Where you're getting your information? Attacking our, our city employees the way you are is completely inappropriate. These people haven't slept for days and you're sitting there attacking people because you didn't get what you want. Your, your, uh, our people in our city get what they wanted immediately. It doesn't happen that quickly. But to the extent that it happened, we should be very thankful. And I'm, I'm absolutely.
Excuse me, Mayor. Excuse me. With all, with all. With all due respect, you're not gonna speak to me in that manner, okay? And I'm not being inappropriate to anyone. I have thanked the police. I've thanked the fire department for what they've done. And I'm thanking also the city staff for what they have done. But what I'm saying, as a commission, we have a responsibility to the entire city. And we need to make sure this never happens again. All, in all due right, even face value. Where were we? Where were we? I was out on the grounds. I know Warren was out on the ground. Where, where was the city commission in this effort? That's what I'm trying to get. It's not that I'm throwing a tantrum. Okay, I'm not gonna allow you to say that I am throwing a tantrum. But what I am saying, shameful. We need to fix this. I'm ready to sit at the table with all of those who have helped make this possible. I have ideas and I'm sure there's some others who have ideas. And of course, the neighbors in these, these districts, they can tell us as well. So this is where I'm going with this, sir.
Well, as the city manager indicated, decisions were made uh two years ago to fund a project that was uh identified back in twenty seventeen. Why we didn't fund it sooner uh was the decision by previous commission. The reality is that we've already begun a two hundred million dollars uh stormwater mitigation project. You see the signs all over these neighborhoods that were now flooded. It's not that we aren't trying to do it, trying to mitigate these, this problem. It's not that we are sitting on, on our hands, not, not. It's not that we are sitting on on our hands, not not anticipating the uh the impact. Of these kinds of storms, we are a very proactive commission, we've moved forward with this and we've agreed to fund it. And we're move and this will be completed within the next twenty four to thirty six months, it doesn't happen overnight. If you have ideas that you think that we can prevent flooding like this any sooner than we have been able to so far. We're all ears, we wanna hear what you have to say, what your ideas are. But please do not condemn staff that have been so hardworking over these past several days. To try to respond to a storm that no one could anticipate, especially the intensity of. The largest storm in the history of the state and you're saying.
I am bringing to the table how we need to, the importance of moving forward with this. We need to talk about this transparency. I'm I'm gonna make my statement and then I will um move from this point, however, again. I'm not gonna let you say I'm condemning staff, I am condemning the lack of responsibility that we, the city, has taken. If you wanna say pass commission, pass commission, whatever the case may be. But we need to move, this needs to have urgency attached to it. Twenty four to thirty six months, the way that things are, what would happen in those months? We need to talk about getting these shovels in the ground and getting this moved immediately, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So Mayor, this is Commissioner Herbst.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me uh add, I think, a suggestion that may be helpful going forward. So we have a preposition contract for disaster recovery. I think we should consider having multiple preposition contracts. Because we shouldn't be relying on our neighbors and neighboring towns to bail us out. Because as you point out, if this is a hurricane of regional impact, then our neighbors are not gonna be there with us. So I think we can't afford to do that, we need to consider having multiple prepositioning contracts in place. If that's what it takes in order to have the requisite manpower and material and equipment to resolve this. You know, maybe the answer is not thirty trucks, maybe it's fifty trucks out there. And if we've got the right contracts in place, that may be able to provide Commissioner Beasley Pittman. With the the level of activity response that she's looking for. And I think, you know, in 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 terms of of getting the stormwater work done. Um and and again, kinda ties into what she's saying, I I think perhaps rather than a twenty four to thirty six month anticipated timeframe. We take the same perspective that we took with the redundant pipeline. And we get this done in a much shorter timeframe. We, again, as she says, prioritize this work because clearly. Uh we're having an an extraordinary impact on our neighborhoods by um by not getting this done timely. So I think we should take some efforts to accelerate the pace of the work as we did again with the redundant sewer line through uh through my district.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, who's that?
Yeah, um I have an awful lot I'd like to say about this, um especially responding to uh concerns of. Uh commis- uh the Vice Mayor, um but I just let you, I I. I prefer, don't don't take my silence as meaning that I don't have a feeling about this, I do wanna wait until the commission reports and I will give a report. Normally, I'm pretty short, I but I do have a lengthy feeling that a report that I'd like to give, I am gonna wait until commission report to weigh in. Okay, just so let you know.
And 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 uh Warren, we appreciate all your engagement these past few days uh. Uh attending the tap press conferences and 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 participating in uh in some of the decision making. So um your efforts have not gone unnoticed. All right, uh this is city manager, do you have any?
Ma- Mayor.
I wasn't even invited to a press conference and I asked to be a part of one, really?
Okay.
Mayor.
I yes, yes, Commissioner.
Um I I would like to just also echo what the Vice Mayor said, I was never invited to a press conference either. Which I don't understand how only one commissioner can know there's a press conference besides the mayor, but besides that, we get into that. You know, I just wanna make sure that maybe the city can take advantage of training that FEMA offers. Uh FEMA has a training course for elected officials uh to basically train folks on their roles during the disaster. Maybe we should look into that and maybe we can all take advantage of that. Uh I think that would be really uh a a an excellent training. Um because there are, I believe, dos and don'ts for elected officials during a disaster. And it might be a good idea to listen to what uh FEMA has to offer, thank you.
Well, it's, I'm glad you brought up FEMA because I have to tell you that um FEMA just dismissed us. As a, as a pro- as a um. As a, what was it? Yeah, we were non qualifying event before they would even think, they weren't even thinking of coming here to do any analysis, let alone of. Reimbursement or any kind of financial assistance. And if it weren't for the uh the efforts of the city manager who said, wouldn't accept that as a as an answer. Uh we now have FEMA on the ground, we now have FEMA doing the analysis, we now have our staff. Uh providing the data that FEMA net is uh requires in order to to make its decision. And it now appears as a result of the efforts of the city manager, that we're going to see a a positive FEMA response with. Uh what we believe will be a financial reimbursement and uh and um. A financial participation in trying to recover from this. So things that you talk about saying, you know, we're not doing our job or the city staff is not doing its job. I think overlooks the fact that there are a lot of things in the works that that are going to ultimately help people. So um you know, before we start, you know, criticizing and and judging people. We should understand the full scope of how these these disasters are addressed. And and there's an example of how we're gonna uh hopefully be able to get the FEMA assistance. That we were otherwise told we would never see, so anyway.
Mister Mayor, I do, I I need, I do have to, I do have to say something, I do have to say something real briefly. Me or John, me or John?
Go ahead. You go first, Warren, go ahead, so all right, so I'll just be very quick, Mayor, so just to let you know that uh. Sen- Senator, so yeah, Senator Rick Scott called me the other day and asked me uh what he could do for us. And and that was one of the things that I talked about with the Senator is how we can look at uh at engaging FEMA. To step up and and help out with us, um looking at some individual assistance uh, you know, that could be made available to some of our residents. So uh I'm working with the Senator as well as staff in his office to see what we can do. That uh you know, could hopefully move the needle with uh with respect to FEMA as well.
I I need to address two things if I can, Mister Mayor. I I I realize now people might have been slighted about the about the press conference, but I just wanna say. I've been out there volunteering uh throughout the whole community, including in the shelters, the Red Cross shelters. And um I happened to be in the shelter when the press conference was coming, but it's not like I was invited there. I was volunteering in the shelter at the time and they were setting up and and it's not like I was given inside info or something. So number one, I I wanna put aside the fact that they didn't give any preferential treatment, I just happened to have been volunteering at that. Particular shelter, number two, um I might be the only uh elected official here that is fully NIMS trained. I I am, I'm still am the Director of the Medical Reserve Corps. I've worked with the Red Cross United Way, MRC, the Department of Health and Broward County Medical Association. And some of what I do uh I as a volunteer in the community is under that umbrella. So um just uh Steve, just I I've gone uh administrative and NIMS training the whole way through. So that did help me communicate with a city manager, fire police chief and whatnot, so uh. Um I don't want anybody thinking, being feeling slighted that I was given, you know, an invite, I just happened to have been at the the shelter when they had that.
Okay, uh wanna wrap this up, Mister City Manager?
So I wanted to give some assurance to the commission and the public about what we're doing, we have a plan. Two hundred million dollars worth of storm sewer projects and I wanted to uh have Alan Dodd, Director Dodd. Uh talk about that program and the priority that that program has. And I also wanted uh to to share where we at with Melrose Park and Melrose Manor, Director Dodd, please assist us.
Uh good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner, so uh it it has been very challenging, but uh. Uh we have been using the infrastructure that's already been putting ground in uh some neighborhoods to help with water removal. So uh just to go very quickly through the Stormwater Master Plan, it was finalized in two thousand seventeen. And it included seven neighborhoods that were priorities that were designed and uh able to go out for construction. Uh we awarded construction contracts for Edgewood and uh River Oaks. Uh last year and both of those are well ahead of schedule. Uh in River Oaks, almost all of the stormwater infrastructure is in the ground, it's about seventy, eighty percent. In Edgewood, it's even further ahead and the project was scheduled to be completed in June of this year. As we got into this operation, we actually used that infrastructure to help us to pump water out of those two neighborhoods. Which had significant flooding, which helped out, once we complete those two projects and we get pump stations in place. About a year from now, they will have a fully functional operating uh stormwater system that will help to remove water. Uh the next two neighborhoods that are scheduled to go out for bidding in May of two one twenty three is Durs and Dorsey Riverbend. And we will have about a one year to eighteen month construction period to get those next two neighborhoods in place. Each one of these projects is anywhere from twenty to thirty million dollars of construction. And so we will continue, we'll try to get those out as soon as possible to get those next two neighborhoods. And then proceed with the final three neighborhoods in the Stormwater Master Plan. Now, Melrose Manors was not part of the original seven neighborhoods. So last year, uh the commission authorized and we awarded a contract to start design of the stormwater systems. In Melrose Manors, I don't have the statistics in front of me for that one, it is under design and as soon as this is completed. We will also try to accelerate that one to get it out into construction. But we are still probably two to three years from having anything in the ground in Melrose Manors. Uh the Melrose Park system, as you remember, we had issues in with significant flooding. Uh a few years ago due to the ditch not being properly maintained when the water was trying to flow out of the city of Fort Lauderdale through Lauder Hill. We did a significant amount of work to get the ditch back into condition and to clear the pipes that were going low. We did uh and this is for both Melrose Manor and for Melrose Park. Uh e- when we were trying to move water, the problem is that water has to move north to the north fork of the new river. Because the canal levels were so high, the water simply could not flow out. We did finally get Melrose Park drained, once we were able to get the canal levels lower, the water can go out. In Melrose Manors, we had to wait for the water conditions in the Broward County system. To drop down to the level that we could stop pumping water through there. And we have been doing trucking and moving water to other locations yesterday. We are finally able to put pumps in place to start drawing down Melrose Manors. And we will continue to pump water to draw that system down.
So then, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, I I got a question about that, this is John Herbst. So I have been told informally that Weston and Southwest Ranches and Davies. Were over pumping all of their stormwater out into the canals that flow out to the new river by Edgewood, is that an accurate assessment?
I I cannot talk what the other cities were doing as far as pumping water. I I do know that we had challenges as we were taking water out of these neighborhoods in trucks or with pumps. You have to have some place to put it and the canals were so high that natural drainage systems couldn't get the water out in uh some of the neighborhoods.
Right, but I think that's the problem, I've heard that Broward County and and possibly uh South Florida Water Management Districts were putting more water into the canal systems. Which is why by the time it got to us, it was too high for us to drain into it. I'd like to find out if that's an accurate statement or not, I wanna know if we're dealing with issues where, you know, our our folks, uh you know, upriver, if you will. Are contributing to the problems that we're experiencing here. Because if that's the case, we need better coordination with these other cities because they weren't experiencing. Anywhere near the level of inundation of rainfall and yet they may have exacerbated our flooding issues. By creating a scenario where we couldn't pump our waters out into the canals because they were already full from the stormwater. That they were pumping it into the canals and they they didn't have the the exigency that we had in in terms of doing that.
Yes, the 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 South Florida Water Management System is uh or the South Florida Water Management District controls up to the control structures. The S thirty three structure in in our case in particular, and they control the water that is flowing through there. However, uh a lot of the systems are on gravity from these neighboring communities, they do all flow in, we are at the end of the line. So every that goes in takes away capacity from what is remaining for us to use. And and that is simply a challenge of the way the system is designed.
Right, and I and I think that's why the the intergovernmental coordination may be critical in something like this. Uh I again, if it's a hurricane and we're all experiencing the same level of rainfall. You know, then obviously there's not much we can do about it, but when when we're experiencing something that's an isolated event. Uh that that they are not experiencing to the same extent. You know, then I think that's where a a phone call to, you know, Southwest Ranches and say, hey guys, you know, could you hold off on this a little bit? Um you know, may maybe maybe valuable. And and uh and and then one other thing, by the way, I also wanna point out and and I I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the efforts of uh Jared Moskowitz too. And uh and helping us out, I've been in regular touch with uh with him and his office, so I just wanna say again, thank you to uh. Yeah, to Moskowitz, uh you know, Congressman and and uh and again, the Senator, so just wanna get that out there, thank you.
Yes, and and Commissioner, we did have conversations as early as Thursday morning with the Water Management District to make them aware of our issues. And however, they were trying to manage as a system, so it took a while for that to happen. Uh I also would like to discuss about pump trucks. Uh the event happened on Wednesday evening, by Thursday morning, Melissa Doyle was on the phone with multiple companies. To get trucks here, uh vendors pulled trucks off of other places and it took a while for them to get here. But we had three vendors with trucks on station helping us. Uh I believe on late on Thursday, mid afternoon Thursday, we also redirected all of our trucks. From the Water Utility and the Wastewater Utility and we're using them to augment the stormwater trucks during those initial hours. And we did get that requested through the web at EOC and had a number of uh neighboring communities that were sending trucks. So so we were trying multiple avenues to get trucks as quickly as possible. However, it just takes a little while for them to be able to redirect and uh and once it came in, we were had a strategy on how we are allocating them. To try and address numerous spots throughout the city.
A quick, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, um obviously, you know by now that I've spent the last five days embedded in Edgewood, River Oaks, so the shelters. I mean, e- every looking cranny of this this area. Um I've heard people bitching complaining about um some of the things, whether they are or not related to the infrastructure, whether it's related to the storm. And no, at no one cooler heads prevail at some point sooner rather than later. Um I think after the flooding goes down, we should maybe instruct the Infrastructure Task Force to do a post flood analysis. Know the new uh in- infrastructure that's over in Edgewood, the works that's being done in River Oaks to see uh. You know, to take a look at that uh in perspective to the the storm as well as the areas in in Melrose. At some point, I think the we should direct the Infrastructure Task Force to take a look at that.
Okay, that's fine, uh John, to your point regarding upstream neighbors. Um that's gonna be a tough sell, as you know, um. You were asking them to delay drainage in their own communities to accommodate the fall of water in hours. Uh you know, we could try, but uh um it I think it's gonna be a tough sell. Uh especially as you said, even if it's a hurricane event where we're all suffering uh systematically. But anyway, we can certainly try our best in that regard.
And Mayor, I think that might be a better uh a hall for the county to deal with, maybe we can get the county a little bit more involved. If we're gonna be talking about all of those other cities, that might be perhaps better suited to the county.
And the Broward League of Cities, uh any needing, the Broward League of Cities could be brought up to discuss mutual aid in that regard. Uh this is city manager, you wanna say a few?
Yeah, just uh one more thing, I wanted to show some of the data that we've been collecting. Um the data shows here uh the work of the inspectors and what they've been doing. As you can see here, uh the inspectors are going door by door, house by house to uh determine the interior impact. As you can see, a lot of, a lot of impact with major damage, five hundred and eighty five homes. With major damage on the southern portion of Fort Lauderdale. Th- these are homes where water went inside with eighteen inches or more. And then you can also see here, again, some of the impact here has been uh in Melrose Park. And then we're assessing here in Melrose Manor, so these numbers are going to continue going up as we have more crews. That are assessing door by door and then this data is also going to help. Uh Director Guthrie from the Department of Emergency Management uh in his uh petition for reevaluation. For individual, for individual assistance for each of the neighbors. And uh one last thing I wanted to share is that we uh we follow a joint um. Uh in uh we follow the Incident Command System where uh we have joint information. Uh, in uh, we follow the Incident Command System where uh we have joint information. Um, that is presented uh twice on a daily basis. And we uh try to, or we we assemble the information. And utilize the mayor uh so that he can uh. Uh, be serving as the voice of the city so that that information can be disseminated out. So. Uh, when those media channels uh were assembled or those media conferences were assembled. Uh, those were assembled, uh, requesting the mayor and the mayor only, and that is why uh you perhaps did not receive. An invitation, um, because these were done uh on the fly and again, uh, some of the. News cast or news uh reporters were uh asking for the mayor as well and. That is, um, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay.
I I have a question before.
Who's that? Okay, sure, go ahead.
Okay, regarding the chart that just was shown, it highlighted our south end of the um, the city. And also Melrose Park and Melrose Manor. But um, as discussed, um Greg, we went into the areas that were um. Still the eighteen inches that entered those homes. Um, the area that I'm talking about is um Twenty Second Road between Sunrise and about Fifteenth Court. Then also in the Rock Island and um Royal Palm area. Um, between Northwest Twenty Second Street. And Twenty Sixth Street bordered by Twenty Seventh, excuse me, Twenty Eighth and Twenty Ninth Avenues. Those areas were highly impacted. We need individuals out there asking the same questions. Because they will qualify under um the assessment you're doing for FEMA.
So thank you for sharing those addresses and and we want to tell. Um, the commission and the public that we have not forgotten about anyone. Uh, we asked, uh, so part of the emergency management is to request. Uh, for additional assistance and we did request for additional inspectors that can come into the city. And it do this evaluation proactively. And uh, we we uh, we did get a commitment that those are also underway to assist us as well and complement. The uh field task force that is out there right now.
Greg, Greg, could you please share once again that phone number? Anybody with damage in their home? This is very important to share the phone number that they have to call.
So so the number that they have to call is they can call it eight thousand number. If you have any damage in your home with uh twelve inches or more that water went inside. Uh, the number is again nine five four eight two eight eight thousand. We have staff that will take your address. We can also do an inventory of needs that you may have. And we are directing uh resources to those individuals that are calling the number. And we will also have inspectors that will go and uh take pictures, document proactively, and this system is connected. Uh, with the state, so we are streamlining uh the data collection and data dis- dissemination. Uh, process so that people can get their uh their benefits uh quickly and promptly. A big shout out thanks to uh Chief Lucas and I T Lucia for setting up this system in a matter of hours. Uh, so that concludes my report.
What are we doing for those individuals who um. May not have access at this time with the computers. Um, computers have been damaged in the floods. Um. Cell phones have been damaged. How are we getting this information out?
So so uh, we have today um, a group of individuals that are going door to door handing out. Um flyers with respect to the uh circuit transportation. And we're also giving information out as uh or collecting information as to what are the damages. There's that number that they can call or they can go to one of the uh comfort sites. Uh, but we certainly, we can certainly bring them to the comfort site and there is staff there that can assist them with the intake process. Um, so again, circuit is driving around individuals impacted and and we are more than happy to assist on that.
Susan, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I just got a message from um Chief Lucas that just if they got a call into us, we will get out there, so ask them. Not to call again. And the other thing, just to talk about to be eligible for FEMA, it doesn't have to go through this evaluation process. This is just establishing a threshold of a certain number of homes and once we meet whatever that threshold is. Everyone will be eligible to file a claim with FEMA, an individual assistance claim.
Right, and as a result of our going door to door and identifying the damage, we are reaching that threshold amount. Uh, in order to justify and document the requirements that FEMA has established, so. And I appreciate everyone communicating with our federal officials. I too have been contacted by federal officials. Um, all the way up to the White House who took notice of this and um. So very pleased that uh everyone's working with us to try to to try to uh help our community out. Um, and 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 the governor's office, um. Well, Chief is a Chief Financial Officer. The head of emergency management, the insurance commissioner, uh, all of whom have been here in Fort Lauderdale trying to help. Um, and so we appreciate all the help that uh that they're participating in helping our city manager, our city management. Okay, so um, moving on to our regular agenda. Uh, we had one communication from the uh Education Advisory Board. Um, is uh, is Zoe on the line?
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, Zoe, can you please explain what this communication is about?
Absolutely.
Education listening campaign.
Good afternoon, I'm Zoe Saunders, Chief Education Officer for the City of Fort Lauderdale and the liaison to our Education Advisory Board. Uh, we are also joined by our Vice Chair, Dr. Suzanne Dean, and so while they're making her presenter, I'll I'll just share a few points that really. Factored into this recommendation um and was really uh three areas that were really primary to our conversation. Uh, so first was the understanding that schools are really important to um economic development and the overall quality of life for our residents. Um, over the past several years, the city's neighbor survey has reported low satisfaction with public school offerings. Uh, we also have heard from the business community that they research school offerings for their employees before relocating uh to our community, so we know that. Access to quality schools and educational programs are really critical to the overall vitality um of our city. Uh, secondly, and really importantly, uh, the education landscape is changing uh significantly. And at the local level, that may mean there will be decisions made around those schools that are under enrolled or have aging facilities. Uh, Broward County Public Schools um recently launched their long-range planning process. And as part of the long-range planning process, they will be analyzing the need to close schools, consolidate schools. Uh, reboundary schools or repurpose schools for another community benefit. Um, and while they're in the phase right now of developing the framework, there may be certain um. Schools that rise to a level of importance to look at um more immediately. So the cities of Parkland and Coral Springs have experienced this. Uh, they recently went through. A reboundary process around Marjorie Stone and Douglas. Um, and it's true of any change that happens uh to schools. Uh, it is a very difficult process and it elicits a lot of input and passion from neighbors. And so as the city of Fort Lauderdale, we have a really important opportunity to get ahead of this process and getting input. And collecting that so that we can help to champion those priorities that are going to be most uh important to our community. Um, and thirdly, the E A B discussed at length what the role of the City of Fort Lauderdale is in this process. Um, as we're not in the business of operating schools, the role we play is very unique and different. Um, and so what the Education Advisory Board has discussed is that the city has an opportunity to really work as. An independent entity to collect input from our residents. To really listen and understand from our neighbors what they like to see in their schools. Um, what enhancements would be required uh really to to meet their their expectations and to create more demand um in our school offerings. We also have an opportunity as a city to convene a group of stakeholders, a um, a really diverse group of stakeholders that includes. You know, the business community, our neighborhood associations, our nonprofit partners, our schools. Um, and and others that have a vested interest in the success um of our schools. And then lastly, as we continue to understand and refine our focus, we'll be able to effectively champion. Um, those improvements and really amplify the voice of our community. Uh, so those are the the three primary areas I do want to acknowledge too, uh, some of the unknowns. Um, at the beginning of this process, there will be some ambiguity, uh, because we'll really need to come, go into this process. Uh, and challenge assumptions and ask a lot of questions. Um. And this will be very grassroots, so we do not have funding to have a consultant support us with kind of organizing a design for this type of outreach. Uh, but that can also be a really incredible asset, uh, because the the purpose that we're looking to uh to do here is. Really have those one-on-one conversations with neighbors at a very local level. To really capture what our community feels is going to be important um into the future. Uh, the process will involve surveys and focus groups. And as we continue to engage more and more residents, I will create a da- a database of those folks that are really engaged in education. Um, and as we refine, um, that call to action will be able to mobilize and and support. Um, our community and advocating for those improvements. Um, from a staff perspective, um, you know, engaged a number of different stakeholders to begin um exploring the the need. Uh, for the city of Fort Lauderdale to to focus on this and to get input around what um our role is. Uh, so we've engaged the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, Neighborhood Associations, Downtown Development Authority Schools and. Of course, our Education Advisory Board and and many and their expanded network. Um, so just wanted to to share uh this as an opportunity uh to learn and uh to champion some improvements. Uh, that will have a really big impact um long-term in our community. So if there are also.
Very, is there any immediate action you're asking the the commission to take on?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, Mister Mayor, I gotta chime in. I gotta chime. I can't be silent anymore. I find this totally inappropriate. You know, I'm usually reserved. I usually don't speak my mind.
What's that?
Pam and I do not have time to go business as usual. Education is important. I'm not focusing on that. The issues in conference are important. They need our attention. It's in inappropriate to keep going like this as if there's not. These things should be postponed to the next meeting. They should be tabled. Everything that doesn't have to be discussed now needs to be tabled now.
Well, City Attorney, help help us. I I don't think this is a conference meeting. We can't make motions. We can't take action, so how would we even do that? But let's just stay here as long as we have to. Let's just get through this agenda and then let's get back to commission reports and keep going, but. I don't think that we're, we have the ability to just table or take any action at all. This is, we can't do a motion. This is a conference meeting.
Bring them up next time.
Bring them up next time. I need to focus. I can't focus on these things. I have more important things. Historic preservation, education, those are important topics. But I simply can't focus on them now. It's not doing them a service dealing with them now. Bring them up next meeting. Pam and I are being totally disrespected. We have other things we have to focus on. Now is not the time.
Okay, this is just a report from.
I don't, I, it's falling on deaf ears now, Stadeen. I, th- these are important things. Bring it up next time, please.
Well, Warren, what do you want to talk about? Go ahead.
Eat this to a minimum. I have things I want to talk about the storm. Let's get the staff back out there where they need to do and don't. Take a lot of time with, I mean, historic preservation, the flex unit, these are things that I want to. Put, give attention to. I can't focus. I'm focusing on storm recovery. It's not fair. It's not fair to be.
I I think we have all day and I and you said you.
It's not the time. I don't have to focus. It's every, it's totally inappropriate, Steve. To be dealing with these things now. Now is not the time. Quick meeting, focus on what needs to be done and let the people that Greg and his staff get back out there and and do what we need to do to save our our citizens.
The city, that I, what is this? I'd like to hear from the city attorney. There are people that have signed up to speak on topics. We have a notice meeting. We have noticed agenda items. I don't even know if we're able to just scrap it. I I'd like to find out if we can, but I don't think we can. But I don't know why we can't get.
I think this is simply a conference meeting. There's no reason that we have to have this meeting at all. We can cancel this at any point we want. This is not the evening meeting.
I agree with John a hundred percent. I would not have had this meeting to begin with, with the one exception of commission reports. I do want to have. A commission report. Everything else does not have to be discussed today.
Well, City Attorney, can you tell us how we have?
City Attorney.
I'll tell you what. With a notice.
Wait, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what. Let us, let us let Zoe finish and then we can jump down to commission reports. Uh, we have about fifty people have signed up to speak on 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 the rest of the agenda, so um. I do want to at least respect their interest in speaking. Uh, we also have an executive closed-door session at four thirty, so we need to address that. But after Zoe's finished, I think she's just about concluded. We can jump down to commission reports, I guess. Uh, Dr. Sternman is eager to talk about some things that uh that uh. Would you normally address in commission reports, so we can certainly do that. Uh, and still be able to respect the agenda, so.
Mayor, could I ask a question? You just said we have the executive closed-door session, so I I'm sorry, I thought we canceled the closed-door session today.
Well.
That's different.
You had it, you have, you had two scheduled. You had one scheduled in the morning for uh. Dealing with your labor contracts and.
Okay, this is the litigation one, okay. Okay.
I can, City Attorney, uh, City Attorney, quick question. Wait, there's, we're not under any obliga- this is a conference. We're not under any obligation to discuss anything today. Can't everything be table till next visit? I mean, it wouldn't, I know people have signed up. They could speak in person next time we bring this up. We're not obligated to discuss anything in conferences. That, we're not voting on anything. Is that true?
We do this all the time. We 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 remove items from the conference agenda all the time, but we don't have time to get to them.
No, we don't have time for this, guys. We don't have time for this nonsense. I mean, they're important items, but now is not the time. We need to remove them and move on. We need to get this on, go straight to conference and then let, and then move on.
I'd like to hear from the City Attorney. I still don't understand. We have a, we have a, it's a conference meeting, but we, it's a notice meeting. It's a notice meeting with an agenda of the city commission. Why didn't you bring this up yesterday or the day before and then maybe the city attorney could have addressed it? I just don't think that this is the right time. The mayor just said over fifty people online waiting to talk about a variety of issues. I have, I absolutely believe that we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
I I was of the impression. Go ahead.
Interject, I don't.
Listen, Zoe, can you please complete your comments and and please tell us what action you and you are expecting? The commission to take or is it just to receive the recommendations from the advisory board that you're asking about today?
I I can appreciate that the timing is challenging right now. This was a communication that came from the March Education Advisory Board meeting on some work that they've been doing over the past several months. Just trying to get direction and support uh for the next steps. Um, if it's better served to come at a different time, um, I can certainly bring some additional information forward. Either pushing this as an E A B communication, however the um city manager would like to proceed.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we continue this conversation at another time? Apparently, we do have some other things we need to discuss. I I also want to talk about um, uh. The city halls, uh, uh, problem we have. We have a very serious problem in the city hall right now. We have to discuss, so why don't we bring this to another meeting? Sorry, Zoe, it's just circumstances uh changed, but thanks for uh coming on to this meeting and and talking about the communication. So let's.
Zoe, 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 I think it's a really good idea. For many years, I've talked to real estate agents who always have such a bad impression of our school system. I think we do need to do an education campaign and a listening campaign, and I'm very eager to hear what the Education Advisory Board has to say in the future. Uh, I am able to focus on this and focus on other things at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so uh, thank you again, Zoe. Uh, so let's move down. Mission reports, um, uh, if everyone is okay with that. Uh, why don't we just go start on the commission reports and we'll start with uh, uh, District One, Commissioner, um, Herbst.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield my time.
Okay, District Two.
I I I had a lot, I had a lot that I wanted to say, but I I still haven't gotten an answer yet about what we're doing with the agenda, so I'd like to know before I.
Yes, I said, I said we'll jump down the commission reports. And then we'll conclude the commission reports, then I want to have a conversation with regard to city hall, and then we can go back to the to the agenda.
And that's the one I'm waiting for as well, Mayor.
And we are going to talk about city hall. Where is that on the agenda or is that just in your commission reports?
Well, I was going to bring it up as part of my commission reports.
Okay, um.
So please go ahead, please go ahead, please go ahead and uh proceed.
Okay, I'll do this really, really quickly. I'm going to skip over all of the uh meetings that I've had in the last couple of weeks and I'll. Skip over what's coming up in the next uh, next week or two uh for the sake of time. Um, I will though say that um I did attend a funeral service yesterday with the mayor for Norm Kent. Uh, our city lost a real advocate um for so many things, uh, particularly uh LGBTQ rights and the ceremony was. Very sweet and very touching. Uh, we lost a real champion of of many things uh in our city. Um, I also want to mention that today is Yom Hashoah, that is Holocaust Remembrance Day. Um, I I think it's an important time to remember what happens uh when hate. Um, I I think it's an important time to remember what happens uh, when hate spreads. Uh, and then I'll just uh, go, speaking of hate spreading, I will just go right into some of my dismay over what's happening in Tallahassee. Um, I I'm concerned about some of the negative effects on our local state financial plans, our pension systems. Uh, there are still two bills that are alive right now, uh, anti E S G stance uh, behind that. Uh, other states have proven that this has really been a problem. Uh, in fact, in Kansas, uh, in Kentucky, the entire uh, banking system protested. When Kentucky tried to uh, impose these kinds of regulations uh, on its pension system. Uh, there've been problems also uh, in Indiana, uh, and also Texas. Uh, so those are, those are bills that are telling uh, municipalities and the state how to invest, where to invest, where you can invest. Uh, I think that's bad for capitalism and I I think it's bad uh, for financial plans. Uh, I'll skip over uh, some other stuff here. Uh, six week abortion ban. Uh, I saw a report this morning on TV. About a woman in Florida who was forced to carry her baby to term when she knew that three months ago. Uh, that child would be born without organs and the child would die as soon as it was born. Uh, it was heartbreaking. Uh, I am so, so sorry to see our state go down that road of virtually uh, total bans uh, for women. Uh, lastly, um, there have been over twenty five anti LGBTQ bills introduced in Florida, Mississippi and Tennessee. Uh, also not so great in Texas. Our state is going uh, in a direction that I would consider a race, a race to the bottom. Uh, it is very sad to me when I read uh, reports and I read newspapers from Equality, Florida. When I read from uh, the Florida Immigrant Coalition and even the N double A C P. Uh, all of these agencies, all of these organizations are issuing travel advisories for Florida. That is, that is disheartening to think that these major organizations are telling people that this is not a safe state to visit. Uh, this is not a safe state uh, to move to. Uh, again, a very disheartening. Um, and just this this week, the National Urban League has also issued a report saying that democracy is under attack uh, for black Americans. Uh, there were parents of transgender children who were testifying in Tallahassee recently and also transgender adults. All they were asking for was to be able to live and to be able to have healthcare. And a Florida legislature, uh, sorry, a Florida legislator looked at them and called them mutants and demons. Is this what's happening? Um, I'm hearing from more and more constituents in my district who are just so disappointed uh, in what is happening in Tallahassee. I don't even really know of that many bills that are affecting us in a positive way on so many different levels. And just today I read that there's even going to be a one percent increase uh, in folks' homeowners insurance premiums to deal with the fact that there's such insolvency. Um, in that industry as well. Uh, and that certainly is timely with what's going on now in our city uh, with homeowners uh, and what they're going to be facing. Uh, that's it. I had a lot more, but I'm just keeping it really brief. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, uh, okay, Commissioner Beasley, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I want to first share that in in our community in our city, we did lose um, two pioneers, two individuals. Who have lived in our city for sixty years plus. Um, one was Betty Sue Butler. She was a resident of historic Dorsey River Bend. Um, my av- advocate for this community. She had been a barber for many years in her life. And also, um, also Mary Alice Gancy Baskin, Baskin, excuse me, also a longtime resident in the city. I attended their funeral services on Saturday. Um, they were definitely missed from the community and from the city as well. I want to take this time to thank um, the HOA presidents in District Three. I was able to reach out to them. We've been talking through out this storm, um, water damage and flooding that we've been dealing with in this city. Um, talking to them. Um, they're keeping me abreast of what's going on in the neighborhoods. When I go into those communities, they're meeting me and greeting me, um, introducing me to the other neighbors, keeping me um, abreast of what is going on. So I am out in the community, seeing this for myself, talking to the neighbors, uh, reassuring them that we, the city is not, we will not ignore what's going on. And address the issues at hand. Also, I would like to thank um, some of those neighbors who um, reached out. And um, are willing to work with us moving forward. Um, I received a call from Coach Nelson out of Marrow's Park, um, the groom's family out of Dillard Park. So Rita Cook out of Marrow's Park, the Lockhart family in Marrow's Park, over in Rock Island. I I spoke with um, Mrs. Benjamin um, throughout the community, even in over in Lauderda Manners, the Lauder Hill, excuse me, the Lauder Villa's area. I spoke with Miss Woody um, several times and one day I went over at seven AM. She was out. Um, trying to, of course, keep the water out of her house and telling us about what had occurred. And we went back that same day to see if water had receded and she was still out advocating on her block for her neighbors as well. So I want to thank those individuals for everything that they're doing. Again, I want to thank um, the, the um, individuals who reached out to me via phone. To ask about what we needed in the district in the city. I gave reference to those names earlier. Uh, my Congresswoman Sheila Sheffield McCorman. I heard from my um, county mayor Lamar Fisher. And also, of course, Robert McKenzie, heard from him as well. The Salvation Army, Major Long entered it. He was out. He brought the canteens out. They were moving about getting food to um, the neighbors and in our community. Thank you to our police chief. Thank you for our officers, um, for the fire department as well. We had one incident um, in the district where um, a family had an instant, an infant baby. And they were completely out of formula. They could not get out of their um, home. And the police was able to um, get us to the location to purchase that uh, formula for them. And then drive us in that area that was full with water. So the police department, the fire department, the staff with Fort Lauderdale. Um, city overall, thank you for what you've been doing. And um, I just want to say what we need to do it also. Far as volunteering, we have vendors that are connected and working with the city. They're work, they're ready to work and do whatever needs to be done. There needs to be communication with those vendors. See what they're willing to offer. If it's space, clothing, furniture, um, to even go in and to repair doors. These are the type of things that I've been hearing. Um, so let's have those conversations so we can make sure that this goes across the district. Thank you even to um, also to Broward Health. I've heard from Broward Health. They want to come out and they want to do techn shots for the neighbors in District Three. Understanding what needs to be done. These are the type of conversations that need to be included and um, as we move forward. And also, I I want it, I want to say that, yes, we can chew gum and do two things at one time. But if you're not doing it with compassion, you're missing the mark. So let us be that type of commission that's truly concerned about the people in our district, citywide, citywide. Thank you.
Hey, uh, uh, Dr. Sturman, your report.
I usually, I'm a man of few words, but I'm going to take this for, I'm going to be on for quite a while. Um, I have three parts of what I want to talk about. I've added the last two parts after the meeting started and I'm going to uh, address something that Pam brought up. Um, this is number one. First of all, um, as the city commissioner, and I am going to speak to you as as a first responder later on. Pam, I I think it's would be very um, productive if, and Pam and Greg. If after, at some point, either during this or after this is over, that you invite the whole commission down to the E O C. In particular, Pam and and her district to see how the E O C works, to see how we respond to a disaster, to see the operations. What constitutes a disaster in Burn City Room? And uh, at some point, not during the middle of a disaster, but maybe have the commission in the loop. Um, at some point, uh, as input how we respond to, I mean, we go by NIMS and we could, you could explain to everybody in the commission how NIMS works, incident command structure. I uh, I understand that, but I think there's some communication issues that maybe you could go through responding to how the city responds to a disaster. And if there's any input from our commission into our general response, not during, no, in the middle of battle, but going forward. Uh, so the commission might have input and understanding how we operate, what the thresholds are, what is a disaster and and put things in perspective about this incident. I I think that might be useful and I think Pam, hopefully that 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 could help. Um, uh, what I'm going to talk about now is the next two things. Part of this is as a commissioner and also, like I mentioned earlier, I am a um. I I am fully trained in NIMS. I am the head of the Medical Reserve Corps. I've worked with the uh, United Way, Red Cross, Broward County Medical Association. Department of Health and the Emergency Operations Center at a countywide level during, you know, numerous disasters, starting with Andrew Wilma. Uh, during COVID, we were the lead volunteer organization managing seventeen hundred volunteers. And then we deployed also during Hurricane Ian. So um, I do have the same, talking the same language as as Greg and his staff about that. And because that, I want to thank um, my staff, number one, who we responded, I think, starting at five o'clock, four o'clock. We were supposed to meet at four thirty. I couldn't even get out by five o'clock. We were in response mode and we were up all night. We had a group text with every neighborhood president in my district every fifteen minutes. We were actively helping the city rescue people, evacuate people. You know, they evacuated people to Wind Dixie. They opened up a shelter. Um, then going forward, working with the department heads. Uh, city uh, police chief and fire chief um, did a phenomenal job under horrendous circumstances. I believe we did not have one single loss of life. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager? Not one person?
Not one life, not one loss.
Not one, I know, people are worried about things. This could easily, easily have had multiple fatalities, easily. And we didn't have one, just to put things in perspective, not one loss of life. Um, I um, want to thank a lot of the elected officials that I've been working with. Every uh, uh, mayor, I want to thank the help that you've had when I, every, when I've reached out to you. Pam, uh, you and I have been in contact. I want to thank your communication with my office. That was pretty well. The other two commissioners, we have spoken during, during this uh, briefly, but we had to concentrate mainly on our two districts. Our count, on the county level, Lamar Fisher and I have spoken numerous times on a daily basis in the updates, and I'll give you those in just a few minutes. Our county commissioners, Beam Fur, uh, Geller, Nan Rich, uh, Tim Ryan, every one of which has has given us insight and updates. Um, and also, um, uh, I want to, um. Our neighborhood has been setting up date, just so that you know, we have daily Zooms updates and on every single day. Today, we will probably not have one. We won't have time, but we will reach them tomorrow for vital information that I will share today in a moment. That'll be the third thing, but it's still number two. Um, we did um, uh, Chip Lamarka, Jared Moskowitz, and I want to thank the state for coming through. What's Director Kevin Guntry? Um, that, I want to thank those people, put things in perspective and maybe uh, we could all work together with. Uh, I'm calmed down. Don't worry. I'm relaxed and going forward. I just want to go ahead and now give a uh, my, the last thing is, is an update. Um, first thing I want to remind everybody, little things fall through the cracks. Today is Tax Day. And it's eighteenth. If you don't, am I still on?
You're on.
Some reason I'm lost. Like, I can't see anything. I'm just going to be talking blind. Could you, could you guys still see me?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
But we can't see you.
You cannot see me?
Can see you and we can hear you.
Okay, I cannot see you, but I'm going to go ahead blind, but so just bear with me, but that, that's okay. Today is Tax Day. Taxes are due today. I I know it sounds like a silly little thing, but as a minimum, everybody should at least uh, get an extension or or just respond. Has to be postmarked by today. So everything going on, don't forget, don't, don't add insult to injury. Please remember to at least mail out your taxes or get ahold of the accountant, get something postmarked in the mail. I have a progression that we go through every single day and I'll share that with everybody at this point. Roads, uh, roads were impassable right off the bat. Um, for several hours, people were stuck, couldn't even get out. Forget the cars, the water was, was above the level that people could even drive through. The next day, uh, there was cars in the road. The number one thing that had to be done was to remove those cars, so at least they could be passable for everybody. Uh, I think it was Westway Towing uh, was the company that was charged with that. All the major roads have been cleared in the first several days. Then they were going into the smaller roads. The hospital at one point had flooding going around the hospital in the roads. But the hospitals have always been up and running the whole time. Fire rescue was always available. Thank them. Great job with with our fire rescue uh, team. And um, the roads, if Broward General and all the hospitals are up and running full, full time right now. Um, now cook roads on smaller areas that are, that are blocking, that are blocking intersections, please call uh, nine five four eight two eight eight thousand. If um, if you can't get through, if there's some problem, my office is here to assist in any way we can. I could give the phone number for my uh, uh, the phone number for my communications director Renee is nine five four five six one. Four eight one six six three eight. Once again, the.
I don't think that's a good idea, Warren. I don't think we should be giving out aid cell phone numbers. I don't think we should be, that gets in the way of the uh, nine one one. That gets in the way of staff. That gets in the way of everything that should be happening and who needs to be contacted. I do not think that we should be asking the public to contact our commission aides for anything that deals with search, recovery, any of these kinds of disaster issues. I think it opens up the city to a lot of liability. God forbid someone calls your aide's phone number and says, I was told to call. I couldn't get through and and my uncle died. Then what happens to the city? I just think we need to be more careful, Warren. Please. Thank you.
Steve, Steve, thank you very much. May I continue, Steve? May I continue?
Please proceed, please proceed.
If you cannot get through to eight, nine five four eight two eight eight thousand, in an emergency, like, this is the same thing. I'm going to, let me repeat myself. Nine one one, case of an emergency, you have to have anything report to the city, nine five four eight two eight eight thousand. Any problems with uh, if you need to report any damage to your home for FEMA purposes, just to see if we could qualify, nine five four eight two eight eight thousand. Um, I um, uh, that is if you have a problem. For some reason, you can't get through to eight two eight eight thousand. If it goes down, if it's busy, if you can't get through to nine one one. If you reuse the eight two eight eight thousand and you can't report something, city, we are backup.
Commissioner, Commissioner, um, you just stated that if they can't get through to nine one one, you would like to clarify that. We're not sending emergency calls to.
No, no, all nine one one, all emergencies go through nine one one. All emergencies go through nine one one. We are a backup. No, no, all emergencies should go nine one one. If for some reason, there's a problem with any of those numbers. There's a problem with nine one one, which there has not been the whole time. Nine one one is for all emergencies. If there's a problem with nine five four eight two eight eight thousand, if there's a problem with with anything that you need, as a backup, as a safety net. I'm offering our office to try to help that. It goes through the city manager. The city manager sets this up. And if there's a problem, I will notify the city manager. He will handle that, but we are for communication as a backup, nine one one for all emergencies. Eight, nine five four eight two eight eight thousand for all issues. If for some reason, there's a problem with either one of those, um, I'm available. Available to assist the district in any way that we can. Um, let me go through a couple of issues now of gasoline. Gasoline has been a problem. Um, I I just got through, I just spoke once again to the uh, to the county mayor. And I also, the director of the port just called me right before this meeting to give you a perspective what's going on with gasoline. The port has twelve terminals. Eleven of them are dedicated to gas and diesel. Um, there was, uh, the problem was getting gas from the tanks. We had plenty of gas here in the tanks. Uh, the difficulty was getting the trucks to the tanks to to offload the gas and bring them. Um, what is um, what is uh, the problem is uh, um, as it has been improved at this particular point. Uh, yesterday there was six. Now there's eight. Eight of the eleven tanks have accessibility to the gas from the tankers are going into Port Everglades. Um, there's also three are docked right now offloading gas as we speak. Five tankers are anchored outside. As soon as those three go out, five more will be coming into offload gas. There's thirteen more tankers on the way. At with the city, the state has already initiated their reserve uh, plan. Um, tank, uh, gas is being diverted from our two closest ports, Port Canaveral as well as Port uh, of Tampa are sending uh, uh, gas in our direction to help us recover. So gas is coming left and right. It's just be a little patient. We have plenty of gas and every day more and more is going to be available. I want to remind people of things that that, uh, just reminding things that uh, the city manager has said, remind people about debris pickup. Uh, I think he has mentioned debris pickup has started already. Um, the county has informed me that mosquito spraying is starting as of today. Um, pods, pods were set up. All three are up and running. I've gone and visited the pods as, not as a commissioner, but as a uh, emergency responder. And I just to take a look at that, um, they have a tent, um, um, they have um, uh, everything that that the city. They have everything that that the city manager has mentioned, the tents are there, air conditioning, they have charging stations, they have bathrooms, they have showers. Food is being distributed to the two in that are by my district. We are, I've spoken to the, Pam, this is a question that you had asked, and I I will answer that right now. I've worked with the Department of Health, and as of this morning, they've they have now a continuous presence giving tetanus shots. Anybody who has punctured themselves or is in risk of tetanus, the one on Fourth Avenue, the only one on Fourth Avenue has set up tetanus to be administered. Shelters, there were two shelters, one of the shelters is being closed as of today, and they're going back to Holiday Park. That First Presbyterian will be will be shutting down. There is the hospitals, I was asked to mention a couple of things about the hospitals. Fire rescue, like I mentioned, is up and running, police is up and running, nine one one is operational, never lost operation. Briefly, there were some access issues, but as of now, all elective procedures and all emergencies are up and running, the ERs are fully functional. I think the mayor mentioned about FEMA, there was an eight million dollar threshold for state emergency, there's like a thirty eight point two or thirty eight point three million dollar threshold for FEMA. Once again, I've said this before, I'll repeat it again, anybody with damage, please call the city manager's office, our neighborhood support line at nine five four eight two eight eight thousand to report any damage, anything that you tell us will help us try to reach that threshold. The city, the fire department, our city manager, our administration is going crazy trying to reach that threshold. There's a group in town called the Samaritans, that's going to be based out of First Presbyterian, they're going to be, they're going to be giving, hopefully, a lot of support. They're already in ground, they've already done their assessment, and they've offered with equipment and skilled workers to go door to door, helping people with. You know, just trying to help get debris out, furniture, whatever, ripping out drywall, carpeting, trying to do minimize mold issues. And they are going to be asking for volunteers, and United Way will be the lead organization for volunteers. If any problems, we could assist with that too. Mention about the Red Cross, please go wait for the United Way to make their announcement. I've been meeting with the Red Cross, the United Way as early as latest today. They will make a plea for donations and volunteers, anybody just dropping off donations won't be accepted. They'll have specific things that they will be asking for, businesses are already coming forward with with their help and will help try to coordinate that. A bulk trash was a question that I'm getting on a daily basis, and the city manager has addressed the bulk trash pickup, if you want to say that again. A neighborhood support is helping coordinate the volunteer effort. It, Mr. Mayor, if you want to touch upon the the status of schools, two last things that I was asked from the county, just to remind people, the state business is, state business economic opportunity division is setting up a mechanism to assist in businesses. And the state, the chief financial officer is setting something, a pot up. I don't have details yet to assist people with automobile claims, specifically automobile claims with GEICO and all the actual automobile companies, insurance companies. Well, again, I want to thank some of the local businesses, some of the the grocery stores that have come forward, some of the county commissioners. My office, who has been actually going to, I mean, going car to car rescuing people from the moment this thing hit. And the staff, thank you everybody for your support, stay safe and stay dry.
Okay, great, thank you. So. And I appreciate all your efforts, Dr. Stern and participating in these things as commissioner slash cert general of the field and your experience bringing to bear a lot of that in this time of crisis.
So I just, I still, I still can't see anybody, just to let you know.
All right, well, we can see you.
Okay.
We can see you.
Doctor Stern, maybe we can recommend a good eye doctor for you.
Stephen, you know, I do love you, Steve. I, you, you know, you're a very good friend.
Can you, can you see us now, can you see us now?
No, 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 I'll work on it while you're talking, go ahead, but I'll work on it.
Call this emergency number, Doctor Stern, eight two eight eight thousand, maybe they can help. Anyway.
Thank you.
So, again, just listening to everybody today, it's been amazing that our community has been able to come together in so many different ways, not just the, not just the city staff, elected officials, but also members of our community, neighbors helping neighbors. Stories I've heard and witnessed, just help make this event a minimal impact. And as as said, so much worse could have happened. And and so I think we need to focus on that, I think we should focus on, you know, what kind of event this was and 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 to realize that natural events such as this are often unanticipated and and sometimes difficult to respond to. You know, this commission has dealt with difficulties in the past. COVID hit our, hit our city like it did the rest of the country. You know, it's hard to write a playbook for something that we've never experienced before. And twenty six inches of rain in the short period of time after thirty inches of rain had previously fallen in our city and soaked up all the groundwater. It's just one of those things that we're just going to hopefully learn, have lessons that can be learned. And the reason why they're important is not because we expect another downfall like this, but there more than likely will be other intense weather storms that are going to take place, whether they be in the form of a simple rainstorm or whether it be a hurricane or even tornadoes. We should always have a a a full measure of response available to to help mitigate the impact of storms such as these. Unfortunately, it has spawned voices, I think that again, trying to find blame where blame is not not due. And and I want to point out a couple of things, none of which were brought up by any of the commissioners today, but I do want to bring, I do want to talk about it. First of all, there's some belief out there that that development somehow, the scale and the extent of developments that's taken place in our city somehow caused a a greater impact on the city than it should have. Meaning that somehow with all the new development that's taking place in the downtown, that somehow that caused flooding in Edgewood, caused flooding in Dorsey Riverbed, and it caused flooding in Melrose Manners and Park. I don't think anybody with common sense would in any way suggest that the development that's taken place in the downtown area, being nowhere near these areas had really any any impact whatsoever on on these neighborhoods. And I think that it denies these neighborhoods to write the full attention that we should have in helping to prevent future flooding like we experienced here these last few days. And I take particular exception to some of the articles that were written in today's paper and the letters to the editor. For example, a letter written by Leanne Barber, who said some, who talks about the one stop shop project. And to quote her, she says that the project is designed to pave more than three and a half acres of public land. Well, nowhere is that the truth, there's no, the three and a half acres that now is these one stop shop, well, half an acre is already paved. And so nowhere in the in the in the proposal is three and a half acres proposed to be paid. So misinformation like that and a distraction to the true dialogue that we should have in trying to build a sustainable downtown is what denies our community the intellectual discourse that we're entitled to in order to make us a a the great city that we choose to become. So making things up like that in order to create some sort of debate on something that's a non-issue, I think is completely inappropriate. Another example, written by Amy Hamilton. Amy Hamilton lives in an area called Luttergate Isles, none of which was flooded. And if anything, she lives in an area that is completely paved over by shopping centers and by and by businesses up and down federal highway, none of those areas were flooded. And so I take exception to comments saying that paving over the the city is causing flooding when in fact it's not. It was an interesting retort that was made by Mr. Charles Lad, Charlie Lad, as many of us know him. In response to a newspaper article that was penned by Suzanne O'Brien in the Sun Sentinel, in which she quotes a lot of out of state so-called experts with regard to flooding and how development is the root cause of flooding in the downtown. Well, in his words, every building of any size built in the last fifteen years is equipped with one or more deep injection wells. The way the system works is that the first inch or two of rain and parking goes through a French drain, and then the rest of it is taken through a deep injection well that goes down a hundred feet into the aquifer. Which replenishes our rock. If you were to have driven around downtown Wednesday, you would have seen that the huge paved shopping center and parking lots were pretty much dry as well. And point being that we should focus on facts and focus on the true variables that that are involved in in the redevelopment of a city and stop trying to distract public attention with misstatements of fact. It's intellectually dishonest, and I don't think it's really helpful as we're trying to design a city, making it sustainable and making it worthwhile for all the future developments, not just future developments, but also the people that live here. The people that come here, who live in neighborhoods that expect their quality of life to be sustained and not interrupt with. This commission, over the last twenty years, continues to try to work in that direction. And as I see master plans developed, and I see commissions and commissioners come and go, including myself. As now that I've returned to the commission and been on here for the last ten years, I see the the really the great efforts that have been made to bring the best minds together in order to adapt to change conditions, especially since COVID. Where we've experienced a significant amount of population growth. So let us all make an effort to try to work together to bring the facts to the table and to really analyze situations in a way that that I believe are important to making us a a commission and a community that can work together and to ensure that the right decisions are made and for the right reasons. So having said that, we really need to focus on a really important issue, and it seems that one of the most, one of the biggest areas of impact from the storm has been the our city hall. Why we are meeting virtually today is for the very reason that our city hall is basically in opal. So I'd like to now turn the table over to our city manager, who can give us an update on where the city hall situation is. Because I think that had the greatest impact on that building, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanted to add that we were impacted severely. We have city hall right now in a condition of, I'd like to say, somewhat of a life support. And staff has prepared a presentation that's going to provide you with current status, strategies for the interim, strategies long term. Where we're at with looking at how we can utilize perhaps insurance or payment funding to recover from this impact. And I'd like to, for you all, as you are engaging with the city hall impact, to start thinking about what direction as a commission, will you provide us for this short term and long term strategies? I also want to want to say that we welcome tours on an individual basis to city hall. We can schedule times so that you can see the condition of city hall beyond this presentation so that you can make your further evaluation and determination on strategy. With that said, I'd like to leave you with Susan Brandt, that's going to talk more.
Can you tell us what the, what's, what, how the storm initially impacted city hall?
Sure.
What what the design of the city hall, how it made us vulnerable to the point where it is now, the systems are now is not functioning properly, and then let's stand with some candid over to Susan and get her opinions.
So city hall is a, is a system that was built in the sixties, and there is a building that was, that had a lot of the systems on the base floor or below the ground level. The chillers, the electrical units, a lot of the pumps that are used for HVAC and maintaining the environmentals were all on the basement. The basement suffered severe flooding. There was, there's a picture of a truck that you can see on the screen. And and so in this, beyond this area, this is a ramp. The flooding reached twenty feet, so there was twenty feet flooding down in the basement, which compromised all of our HVAC controls, all of our, the transformer that feeds into the building, and many other controls. Staff is going, is is going to talk more into the specifics, but essentially, it compromised any ability to right now operate. What we've done so far to preserve the building so that it doesn't create mold or other impacts. We've put certain auxiliary systems that are offered by Ashbrit in order to hold a certain environmental condition to sustain the the building. And because of the inability of maintaining certain environmentals, we are unable to offer the city chambers for the public at this moment. We're doing our best to have or 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 at least use the chamber one last time tomorrow. But we, we need additional time, and therefore we could not have had this meeting in person at city hall. With that said, I, staff is going to go in more in detail and talk about how the system or how city hall is today and where we need to go move forward.
And I'm gonna send it over to Alan and his team and the folks at Ashbrit that have been very helpful in in getting us to the point we're at today, so Alan, why don't you take it away?
Good afternoon again, Mayor Commissioners, I'm joined here today with Melissa, who is our debris disaster coordinator, you all know her, as well as Scott Teschke, who is the one of our division managers, who is also taking over as project manager for the city hall restoration. Two other people in the room from Ashbrit, I'd like to introduce Gerardo Castillo, who is a president from Ashbrit Logistics and Jason Fosset, regional vice president for Ashbrit, both who are onsite coordinating a team of seventy five to a hundred employees who are working to get city hall back up, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a general agenda for going through, we're going to talk to the first staff, and then we have some questions posed for the discussions for the commissioners we go through, next slide. Okay, so the facility had more than twenty feet of water at the, going down into the basement in that ramp, and the entire basement was flooded with more than eight foot of water, the way the building is designed. This put the HVAC, the electrical systems, the FPNL transformer, the backup generators, and a number of other components completely underwater. So as we finally de-watered it, it took more than twenty four hours to get the water out of the basement, so it could even be assessed. What they determined was the air conditioning with the HVAC chiller needs to be replaced. Generators will need to replace, all the air handlers going up into the building are damaged, as well as the pneumatic system, the dampers and water chiller systems are all impacted by this damage in order to get back up. Looking at the electrical systems for the building, there was flooding in the roof that had drained down into the building, all the electrical panels, the transformers, motor control systems, conductors, everything in the building basically does need to be replaced. And so the assessment has been going on, they were in and looking at this, as soon as we were able to get it de-watered and have been doing further assessments, next slide, please. Okay, so what this is, is a video that was taken, once we got de-watered and they began going and cleaning up, if you please click on the video in a place for, I believe, around fifty seconds. Again, this is the electrical panels, the mechanical systems, everything was completely inundated underwater. Again, this is the electrical panels, the mechanical systems, everything was completely inundated underwater. And is impacting uh the ability to get the building up and operational again. Okay, you can now see these were the initial crews going in, trying to get the water out, clean up some of the dirt, so that we could at least assess the mechanical and electrical systems and determine the severity of damage that occurred.
Are you, Alan, you saying that the water was a bu- was at an eight-foot level at this basement, at the basement here?
Yes, that that is correct. It was more than eight feet throughout here and overall, uh basically, this entire room was filled with water. I I don't know if you can see on the very end of the video here, you can see on the picture on the left-hand side, the watermark from where the water is and compared to the exit sign for the doors.
What a disaster.
So uh if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so A- Ashbrit has done a Herculean job going in and and basically uh replacing all of the mechanical systems, all of the electrical systems, everything that is on the first floor. They've installed temporary power generation that is uh operating within the building, uh put in a temporary chiller unit to uh provide air conditioning to all one hundred and six uh square feet of conditioned space. Uh, the air conditioner is operational, however, the control systems are not all connected yet. Uh, so they're still trying to work through to manage the air conditioning system. Uh, they have been going through floor by floor, doing cleaning, dehumidification, and trying to prevent mold damage from occurring inside. Uh, they have repaired the leak in the roof. And also, we uh been having a lot of work trying to get the elevators up and running right now. There's only one elevator in the building that is operational. Uh, the fire alarm systems, the damper control systems, all those uh secondary systems are not operational, and we have contractors working with Ashbrit to try and get them up and uh functioning again. Uh, let's go to the next slide. So again, uh th- this is going through temper operations right now. We're trying to is we were trying to get staff back into the building in a temporary basis uh this week. Uh, we are not able to do that due to the severity of the damage. Uh, as you can see, broke going down through system, we have a number of subcontractors who are onsite evaluating the mechanical conditions, the electrical components, the elevators, the fire systems, all trying to get them back up and running. So it's a point that we can at least temporarily occupy. We are shooting to have staff back in the building by next Monday, April twenty-fourth. And at that time, uh yeah, we should be able to at least partially uh resume normal operations. I I do need to point out that as we are going through this, uh IT has pulled out pretty much all of the servers that are in there and have been relocating them, so we can get our communication systems back up and running. And they've been doing a great job on the transfer out of uh operations in city hall to other locations. Next slide. Okay, so we looked at what it's gonna be, and this one here is in order to keep running. And we made some basic assumptions on what it will take to keep this building on life support for the next hundred and eight, hundred and eighty days. And what we're only gonna be focusing on is keeping temporary electrical and HVAC systems running. Okay, this is not replacing any of those system permanently, because a lot of those will take much longer than a hundred and eighty days and will be a much bigger financial investment. We're only doing temporary measures. We are not doing anything to improve or bring it up to current codes. We're just replacing enough to get the system operational. And uh this slide is actually, we have a uh slight update on it. Uh, to operate all of these temporary systems is actually going to be after we do the, get them all up and running a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per day. And so as we are looking at the work that is going on right now, and we have spent approximately three point two million dollars in the last three days, getting this building to the point of this now. We are estimating the total cost that we will invest in keeping it running in a temporary status is somewhere in the range of forty to fifty million dollars.
Alan, Alan.
Yes.
Okay, that's ten forty to fifty for a temporary for a hundred and eighty days. At which point then we have the big work come, we have to now bring it up to Florida code. That's 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 even bringing it up to Florida code. That's just a temporary fix.
Yes, this is just to keep the building running. And and so it's not dying, so that we can work in it. And if we can go to the next slide, uh what we are going to have to do and what we are working on now is we need to do a more detailed assessment to determine how much it will cost, what's the investment, to fully restore the buildings for the long term. And because of the costs that we're investing here, that's when we would need to, in accordance with Florida building code, start to bring things up to the current version of the Florida building code that may not be there now. You know, things are usually grandfathered in based on the code when they were installed. Due to the cost threshold of the, what will be required, what we think is going to be necessary. There will be a a lot of things that will have to be changed up. The entire HVAC, the electrical guts of the building, everything is going to have to be replaced. And so there will be a much larger investment for that. We need to do the assessment first and then figure out what that cost would be, so that we can make an informed decision as to to whether to proceed with that or just to keep the building on life support for those hundred and eighty days and look at other options. And that's where uh if we go to the next slide, I'm gonna turn it over to Susan, and she's gonna start talking about some of those other options.
Thank you, Alan. Um, so just a couple of things, you know, covid did show us that we did have the ability to do some remote work or do on a hybrid type model. Um, so we do have many of our staff that got their laptops and are currently working remotely. Um, some of the ones that have been impacted are the ones that are more forward-facing and we're working and finding alternatives for them in the very short term. Um, but given the costs that Alan talked about, that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a day burn, um, I think we want to consider temporary location um to another facility. And and we wanted to talk about just a couple different models that we brainstormed on. Again, there are a lot of um different variations on these, but wanted to get some feedback from the commission on which kind of avenues you'd like us to take a dive, a deeper dive in. Also, just to mention, um, it, we can answer questions, but the building is insured. Um, and to the extent that we, that it's not covered or things aren't covered by insurance, we have FEMA. Um, FEMA has a general um fifty percent rule um that you'll, that we're gonna be looking at and that, you know, if the cost of the repairs are more than fifty percent of the value, then, you know, then you're talking about replacement. But so uh strategies for the
Susan, Susan, Susan.
Yes.
That FEMA you're talking about, is that contingent upon that thirty-eight point three million dollar threshold in general or or unrelated?
So, yeah, I mean, we would have to, the area would have to be FEMA eligible for public assistance. Um, so there's two different things with FEMA. There's the public assistance threshold, and then there's the individual assistance threshold. So, yeah, that would be the thirty-eight million. I mean, I read in the newspaper the other day, the school board's estimating eight million dollars of damage. We know we have, I I I believe we will have no problem meeting the thirty-eight million dollar threshold in order to have the community eligible for public assistance.
Okay, um, quick question. I hate to sidetrack you, but this is being asked left and right. Thirty-eight point three million people, it's not the city of Fort Lauderdale, that's everybody affected by this incident.
County, and it's county, and generally, the thirty-eight million is gonna be the public piece of it. So the uh the cost of us um doing the pumper trucks, the costs of um, you know, not just us, Dana Beach, Hollywood, the other cities. So that's, and then damage to parks, to our buildings, um, et cetera. Um, would be what is the threshold for public assistance? That would be what the governments would apply for.
Okay.
Um, so strategies for in-arm relocation, um, and one, and that would be to locate um our existing office space that would accommodate all of the city hall functions uh with some hybrid wa- work work model. So that would be chambers, commission offices, ho- um, conference rooms, both large and small. We're talking about hoteling space now. Um, so we wouldn't expect to duplicate the hundred thousand square feet of city hall that with some hybrid work model, we could take a smaller footprint in some um office space. Um, we would have some offices, but a lot of, like I said, that hoteling space. Um, ideally, given the hundred and seventy-five thousand a day, the more move-in-ready a property is, that would make it more um attractive. Um, another alternative, um, and we'll go to the next slide. Is to um look at the chambers and commission offices and select forward-facing services um are downtown with the remainder of staff at a location like we looked at that has conference rooms, hoteling space, some offices, and again, given the timeframes, the more move-in-ready, the better. Um, and one other alternative um would look like the same, next slide. But with chambers and select services downtown, district offices in the individual district and the remainder of staff at a location where we could do that hoteling space, conference rooms, et cetera. Um, we did last week start um some initial looking at different spaces. There's a a building that we looked at um right here um on the north end across the street um that is available and move-in-ready. But again, um, we're just starting to do the research. And again, the feedback we wanted to get from the commission is what type of model you'd be most interested in? Um, do we have to be downtown? Is up here in in this area um on the north end of town acceptable for all or a portion of those? And again, once we get some feedback from you, we'll take some a deeper dive um and come back with some actual alternatives um with prices, et cetera. Um, so that's what I have, Alan. Anything, anything else on the other slides, or is it just Q and A now?
Uh, I I believe we just have Q and A. Uh, I would like to remind the mayor and the commissioners that we do have Ashbrit here who can provide more detailed uh uh discussion about the assessment of the building as well, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Wait, just a second, just a second, or just a second one. Um, so have you completed your your presentation, Alan?
Yeah, y- yes, mayor. Uh, I believe the next slide is just uh questions.
Okay, Susan, have you completed your your
Yes, I have.
All right, all right. So Dr. Sturman, your question.
Well, a lot of this depends on what we think we're gonna end up doing with the with the current building. I mean, is this gonna be a total loss? So we think you were gonna re- repair it? I mean, this does factor into our decision. What what's your thought on?
So, 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 all right, so, um so I've had, so I've been discussing this a little bit with the city manager the last couple of days, and um uh, I did not know these numbers until just now. These are the first numbers. We're all seeing the same numbers at the same time. Uh, forty to fifty million dollars for six months with the oc- occupancy is out of the question, I think. Uh, we would, we would certainly we would certainly be better off in terms of uh cost-effectiveness to relocate into an existing office space. We have uh one ten East Broward, which I know is half the building is vacant. Uh, and in fact, we once considered moving the entire city hall into that building as we were contemplating rebuilding our 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 city hall site. Um, uh, I don't know what the costs are for that just yet. Uh, city manager, do we have any estimates still? Cause we once had an estimate, I don't know how current they are, so I I hate to put you on the spot.
Oh, we were getting those right now.
Okay, um, I think, I think uh, you know, putting the district offices in in the districts for the time being makes a lot of sense. Uh, we clearly can't stay in the same building uh and operate at a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars a day. It just makes no sense whatsoever, in my opinion. Um, now this also, we'll beg the next question, what are next steps in terms of replacing the building? You know, that's
Before we get to that, though, if I may, I think we need to focus on what we wanna do. So I wanna talk a little bit about
Okay.
Building that Susan brought up.
Yes.
So uh, we have in District One on airport property, the buildings where Kaplan University are. And I had toured this several weeks ago, long before this came up. Um, and had the opportunity to bring the city manager up there. I understand that Susan and Anthony have also toured the building. And so Sheldon Gross, who's the owner of this, has made this available to us. And thi- these are move-in-ready. He's got seventy-five thousand square feet of space that has offices, it's got uh it, I mean, thi- this is an amazing, an amazing location. Uh, they stayed dry throughout this entire process. Uh, they've got three floors, they've got a parking garage there, they've got a data center that's available for processing and data recovery. They've got two generators, fifteen thousand gallons of fuel store so uh storage. And this is all set up, that is basically move-in-ready. We would have to do nothing other than, you know, pack up and and uh move our files on our computers over there. So I really wanna encourage the uh, you know, the commission to seriously consider this opportunity. Because we can do this, we can move in there, and you know, we could look at a, you know, four to five-year lease on this. And then we can begin the process of tearing down city hall and building something new. Because it's gonna take us five years to do that, okay? I talk to, I talk to developers all the time, and they tell me that the the timeframe from start to finish for any new building is five years. So if we look at this as a four to five-year process, we have an opportunity to to get some Class A office space that's large enough to accommodate, you know, ninety percent of the city's staffing operations in an expedited manner. Uh, we could basically have access to this within thirty days. So I really want us us to focus on, let's, let's decide what we wanna do with that. And then we'll figure out what we're gonna do with city hall. Because we can move down these paths simultaneously, we're gonna have to demolish city hall. I don't think there's any other path forward for us. So we can begin demolition of city hall. Uh, let's go ahead and get that done. And while we're doing that, we'll figure out a pathway forward for how we wanna construct a new building. Whether it's a straightforward design build, or, you know, we're gonna entertain some kind of a P-three. I mean, I think all those things are things that we can figure out later. But let's settle our location for where we're gonna move our staff right now. We have to do something about that. And then let's knock down the existing building, because right now it's an unsafe structure. So let's just condemn the building, knock it down. And then we can, while we're doing that, as Commissioner Glassman says, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So we can, we can demolish the existing unsafe structure and then figure out how we wanna move forward with getting a new city hall built. Uh, there's, you know, several different delivery models for that, but I don't think
Lot of sense, so we can look at, it makes a lot of sense. We could look at the options of the different office spaces that are available and see what's the most competitive rate for us. So uh, the university is certainly one, and uh, and I think it's a, it's a very viable option, but
You know, I would actually recommend, you're you're up there, mayor, if you have an opportunity to go across the street and take a look at it while you're there. Um, I I think you'll be incredibly impressed with it, so.
I mean, I'm sure us, you know, whatever's the least expensive and the most accessible to the public and the and the most suitable for our needs, I think is really the three criteria.
Yeah, it's move-in-ready, it's a cat-four facility, and it's, and we, we only underline land. It sits on airport property, so you know, I think this is really, really, you know, I'm not just saying this because it's in District One, although, you know, I have
Oh, I don't know about that, commissioner. I don't know about that. Since I'm in District One, I'm I'm inclined to agree with you.
Clarify something, I just wanna clarify something. Uh, the building has not been defined as an unsafe structure, all right? It's not an unsafe structure. Right now, the environmentals are under control. I just wanna clarify that, because we have people that are in there working. And I look forward to having at least one last meeting at the, at the meeting tomorrow, uh tomorrow at the chains.
Right, but I think, I think
Thank you, Greg. I think, I think, though, if we're, if we, if we are not able to keep the mold under control over the next couple of months, it will become an unsafe structure. So not that it is more now, but 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 without immediate remediation, it will become an unsafe structure at a point in time that will no longer be habitable. That's my
Commissioner, I agree with you, and I think uh those are, those are the realistic steps going forward. I agree with
So I, so it's a minimum on that building, current building, not to continue throwing good money after bad, uh pouring it into that. Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so um, so we'll, so the, we'll task uh staff to come up with alternative sites and come up with uh uh places that are gonna be the most competitive in terms of rental and to be able to accommodate uh accommodate us the soonest in terms of trying to move and what the cost of moving is gonna be as well. Uh, it's it's a shame that it's come before us this, this, you know, this quickly. We weren't really prepared for it, but maybe we were a little bit, because we'd already been thinking about moving. Uh, so uh, it's not like um, it's not like we haven't given some of these options, some consideration in the past. Um, I'm not sure it's gonna take four or five years, Commissioner. Some consideration in the past. I'm not sure it's going to take four or five years, Commissioner, but, you know, we'll certainly see what options are out there at our next conversation on this.
Yes, I hope not.
One more piece of guidance as far as chambers. Are we still looking for it? Let's just say we look at a site here for the majority of city hall. Do we want to bifurcate and have chambers or offices downtown?
Kaiser, maybe Kaiser has the equivalent of a chambers.
Oh, we looked and there's, there's a room that could absolutely, so Kaplan, yeah, and.
What did I say?
Kaiser.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kaplan.
Yeah, that could be used in for a chambers.
Okay, so so that's a good thing, it's a positive. You know, we could do it all on one roof, one, all on one's location, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm I'm sorry. Where's the location for?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Wait.
We can share that with you.
Chambers?
Say it again, say it again.
The location that's being considered for the chambers for.
John, what is, John, what's the address?
The address is fifteen fifteen Cypress Creek Road. So basically, it's, it's, it's across from the Executive Airport. It's right off of I ninety-five at Cypress Creek Road. So if you, if you're familiar with where Sixx is, that area up there, the the Atlantic Building, Old North Corridor, yeah, it's on the north side of Cypress.
North side, okay, thank you.
But it's west of Power Line, correct?
That is correct, west of Power Line.
Okay, so what we could do, Mayor, we can look at creating a matrix of showing the different sites. Like one-ten Kaplan and there's even perhaps an opportunity for a building that is adjacent to Snyder Park. And it's you. There's a pending meeting that I have with their facilities VP. They have a, a, a building there with. With the capabilities of doing city business. So we'll bring those those details out to you. If you'd like, we can also set up a special meeting. Just to speak about this and also to speak about creating a pan, a plan for transitioning out, setting up. And then looking at rebuilding and how that will look like.
Okay, that's perfect, okay. Um, all right, so and maybe, and and folks, I hope, I hope you might make yourself available for a special meeting. If those numbers come to us quickly, because, you know, we really need to act in haste when it comes to this type of undertaking. Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars a day is just outrageous, so I don't even bill at that rate, so anyway.
In the meantime, we're going to start transitioning out. Staff will, I'll ask staff to create a plan to start transitioning out.
Okay.
If that's.
Well, I think, are we all, is there a consensus that we should not move back into the building? Do we have that consensus amongst the commissioners?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I am in agreement. We should not move back in.
Okay, and.
Same here, yes, me too, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Steve?
Just, just.
Yeah, yeah, in agreement.
Okay, all right, so I don't want to do anything unless everyone's in agreement on that. Okay, very good. All right, so let's move forward on that and, you know, it'd be sad to see the old building go.
No, 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 I'm not sad at all.
I'll let you push the button for the demolition, Dr. Stern. Not, not today, right?
Yeah.
Let's P and Z, let's P and Z have their meeting first. Okay, can we now move back to the regular agenda? Let's move back.
No.
Okay, quiet. CF one, homeless advisory discussion.
No, 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 Steve, Dean, I'm leaving. I'm I'm not going to stick with this, no. My, my district, I, we didn't even talk about this. People couldn't, pre-agenda, no, table everything, table everything. This is silly, ready.
What are we supposed?
Bring it up next meeting. I, I want to go.
What are we going to do now?
I've had, I've had no public input in this in my pre-agenda. And I, I, I had spoken to the city manager about tabling it and he said it could be tabled. And we're probably going to just talk about essential things that need to be discussed. It's so inappropriate. My, my district's underwater, Dean. People are in, they're, they have no house and we're talking about a historic preservation. I can't think about this now. Please table it till next time.
Well, I've had, I have seven people that have signed up to six, six people.
They could talk in two weeks, they're not disappearing.
Well, what is it, what is important to you, Doctor Stern? We had four o'clock.
I want to give this, I want to have all these items, the attention they deserve, and they don't have it right now.
Well, they have my attention.
I believe that, that Pam and John feel the same way.
Well, what do you want to do? You want to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I think there's a consensus to adjourn there.
So, well, we're not going to adjourn because we have an executive closed-door session at four-thirty.
So that's separate, so let's, right, so let's.
So they have to be down at four-thirty to discuss.
I, Mayor, I, I don't, I don't understand what the issue is. I'm really having a hard time understanding why we're not able to continue meeting today. What, what, what are we supposed, why can't we continue meeting?
I, I don't know. I, I, for some reason, I'm being told that they can't focus on. The other items that are on the agenda for today because they're, because they want to go out and deal with the flood, so.
I don't, I don't, I don't really know what that means. Aren't people, I mean, we, we are, as elected officials, we have posted a notice. We have noticed the meeting. You said, what, fifty people are online waiting here now since one-thirty? I, I am in favor of just continuing as we would always continue. We, we don't have to worry about. A long time between the evening meeting and this meeting because we're not at city hall. I, I'm just having a difficult time understanding why we are not able to continue the business of the commission this afternoon. I, I, I don't understand.
Let me explain two things. Number one, we have on here historic preservation, retirement system, collect units. One-stop shop, things are important, very important, that I did not spend any time looking at. And number two. I want to postpone, I don't have to explain it to you, Steve. I want to postpone it. If we get three out of two, we postpone it. I don't have to answer that. I do not want to have it.
I just.
I, I, I don't, I have forty thousand people to answer to and and you're not in my district.
I know I'm not in your district, but I'm just trying to say, we are a city commission, that we are supposed to conduct business of the commission. The time that we've already spent discussing it that you cannot focus, we could have probably gotten already half. There's only a few items on this agenda. There's not that many things on the agenda. And we have already taken up two and a half hours of people's time who've been watching this because we noticed a meeting. This should have been decided, this should have been decided before today.
I think, I think those items that are on the agenda are going to be somewhat lengthy in time. I don't think they're, they're thirty-second discussions. So to Commissioner Sturman's point. If he hasn't had a chance to review these items and feels comfortable and hasn't discussed them with, with his district and with the city manager. I, I defer to his request. If, if he and Commissioner Beasley Pittman are not comfortable moving forward with the agenda. Then I would support their request for referral.
Yeah, I, I think Pam, Pam.
Yes, I prefer that we table. I started the meeting asking that we table all items on this agenda today. To focus only on the.
Yes, well, folks, yes, well, folks, we have, we have thirty, twenty-five minutes to kill before the executive closed-door session, which we must have. In order to give our, our, our legal staff direction on these items. So why don't we take some time and talk about something in this next twenty-five minutes? So that we don't waste everybody's time, including our community that has signed up to speak. Now, we can take up any number of items. We've got half a dozen here we can talk about. If you're not prepared. I don't know what to say.
Mayor, actually, can we, can we do our executive session earlier?
It's been, no, it's been noticed before thirty, so we can't.
Well, I want to know, how, how is everyone going to be able to focus on that?
Well, my question is, could we postpone that or does that have to be done right now, too?
We can postpone anything you want, Commissioner. We are, we are the commission. We can postpone anything you want.
Can we make a motion to postpone that also?
Why don't you, why don't you, instead of, wait a minute, wait, let's hear from our city attorney, because some of these things may be times, time sensitive. So let's, let's not get out of control here. Go ahead.
So on two of the items, we have, well, one item, we have a settlement offer that expires. This week that I need direction on with regards to the Maggie, Steve Maggie matter. The, and I need direction with regards to. Those two matters are pretty time-sensitive. They can be deferred, but. But, but the city will incur additional expenses in the league or potentially incur additional expenses in the litigation. Are related to those.
So if we're going to meet on one because we have to have an answer this week, we might as well just meet on all of them. And you didn't need to study for any of them because they're, they're executive session legal matters, so.
No, no, Dave, Dave, why can't we have, okay, I'm looking at the agenda. Why can't we have the executive session right now?
Because.
Four-thirty or soon thereafter as possible. It's not public input, it's closed door. You want the public, close.
I'll let the, I'll let the city attorney explain it to you, okay?
Close door, why do you need?
Yeah, I'll let the city attorney explain it to you, just stop for a second.
So the notice is provided for four-thirty or shortly thereafter, not shortly before. So it has to be four-thirty or after four-thirty. And the state statute requires that we open the session in a meeting. And reopen it at a meeting, so we have to. You have to be in a public session where the mayor will announce us entering into the executive session. Then we'll go into that executive session and once that concludes, we'll come out and he'll announce at the evening's meeting that. We've concluded the executive session.
Dwayne, I've got a question about that. So, so I'm confused on something. So if we were done with this meeting at two o'clock, are you saying we had to sit here till four-thirty? So we can keep the meeting open so that the mayor can then close the meeting to open the executive session?
In order to comply with the statute, you need to be in a meeting, whether you. Whether you temporarily, the recon, whether you reconvene the meeting just.
Right, and then we reopen the meeting, yeah. So we go away, we come back two hours later, we re, we reopen the meeting for thirty seconds and then go into the executive session.
That's typically what would occur when you're in an in-person environment.
Okay, I, I have a legitimate, I have a legitimate question for you, Dwayne. This is, I'm, I'm not hostile, I'm not being argumentative, but. The meeting is an actual meeting. The night is an actual meeting. This is a conference. It's not like it's, you, you take attendance, you have a call to order. It's not like any action is taken here and it's not like it's actually adjourned. It's a conference, correct?
So pursuant, pursuant to our code of ordinances, the city commission meeting begins at one-thirty. Only ordinances, resolutions, and motions, or official actions, as it were, can take place after six. In the afternoon, what we call our regular meeting, so that's.
Is this an actual meeting? This is a conference. Is this an actual meeting we're in?
It is an actual meeting identified as a conference meeting.
And we, do we, do we open it and we adjourn this? Is there a motion to adjourn and we vote to adjourn this meeting here?
No, you, you can't do any motions at this meeting.
So this really, it's, it's, it's a conference, not a meeting. There's no motion.
It's a meeting. Dwayne, I have a question, Dwayne. We did a notice to the public, we did a notice to the public. We published an agenda. We can just say, no, we're not doing the agenda, that's no problem?
A- actually, you can. The sunshine law only requires that we provide notice of the actual meeting. The agenda items may be altered.
What does that mean, altered?
Meaning you can remove and add items to the agenda. The Attorney General's Office recommends that. You do not add controversial items or remove controversial items without, without notice, but. To the extent that, to the extent no other law requires notice, like in the evening meetings where we have. Ordnances that require specific types of notices, items can be removed from the agenda.
And then we're not allowed to make motions, so how does the rest of this agenda get deferred?
I believe by consensus.
By consensus. And then my next question is, because several commissioners have expressed the fact that they have not been able to study this agenda. They're not prepared. So what does that mean for tonight? How are they going to be prepared and studied for tonight?
If I can say something, you answer that. I have been over the agenda. I don't think this, this particular agenda that we're in right now is, give compassion to what we're doing in the city. There's no urgency to this. We can close this out.
And what about tonight?
So, so, so the evening agenda, you have the item, the first item that's to take up is the approval of the minutes and the agenda. In order not to. I guess to give notice to individuals who showed up to attend the meeting. That would be the appropriate time to identify items of the agenda that. You would like to remove if they can be removed. You know, we can help you identify those that if removed would require additional notice or additional cost to the city. But that would be appropriate time for the evening's meeting. There is a similar process for the conference meeting.
I just wish that this had been discussed before today with either the city manager or the city attorney. If folks had difficulty with today, I would not have brought everyone from my district to a pre-agenda meeting last night to discuss the agenda, both this afternoon and tonight. I would have given that courtesy to them so that they did not have to spend that time. I just am not pleased with the way this is actually happening in terms of process. And I just think it does a disservice to the commission and to the community. This should have been decided. Before this present moment, that's all, so.
When, 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 Steve, when? I mean, I usually do my pre-agenda meetings several days ahead of time. Greg was swamped, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I said, he swamped. I said, Greg, this, do me a favor. He goes, listen, we, we don't have to take up these things. Let me just, I have ten minutes to give you a pre-agenda meeting, a ten-minute quick. They're busy doing, doing flooding stuff. I got a quick fifteen-minute thing at five o'clock, right before my pre-agenda. I didn't have hours to go over the historic preservation, things that needed my attention. And it's a, there's, there's an emergency, Steve. There's a declaration of emergency and.
Warren, Warren, calm down, number one.
Oh, no, no, I'm not that upset. I'm being, I'm being.
Calm down, calm down. In an emergency, cooler heads should prevail. It's important to be calm in your discussion and in your demeanor. I'm just questioning why, if you're not prepared for this afternoon, what's going to make you prepared for this evening? That's all I'm asking.
We went through just the bare bones things that had to be discussed for ten minutes with the city manager and staff. Just the bare bones things that were time-sensitive, he went through and those things he highlighted. We didn't go through the conference because that was not critical, that was not time-sensitive. We just can't, we, we had ten minutes, I only have time for X, Y, and Z. I went through those things and I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you, anything that I could delay now, I will, but if something is time-sensitive.
And then you're, and then had a, and you're, so are you telling me that you are update?
City manager was to remove everything else off the agenda that was not critical. I'm disappointed that didn't happen because that was my recommendation to him. Because of everything that we're going through, because we're under a state of emergency, because the fact that people have other things on their mind than a commission meeting. We should simply be dealing with those things that must be addressed tonight and allow people to get on with their lives. So, yes, I did bring this up several days ago, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, that, that's fine, but, but, excuse me a second. I, we appreciate your input, but the reality is that a large part of the city is back to normal again. And I realize that there are certain isolated areas that continue to suffer from the impact of.
There are a large part of the city with.
I guess I was talking. So there is, so, so, the city manager certainly takes my opinion, but, 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 you know, he makes, it's in his discretion. And discuss, in consultation with me and other members of the commission as to what should stay on the agenda and whether or not the, the meeting should move forward. We have.
And my recommendation was an assurance.
And a lot of businesses. Forward and right now, what I'm thinking is, should take a ten-minute break. And then we'll convene for the, for the executive closed-door sessions since no one wants to do anything else on the, on the agenda.
One last question, one last question. Are we still under an emergency declaration?
Yes, we are.
Still, okay, so Steve, we're, we're, we're still under an emergency declaration. Normal things don't apply. Talking about historic preservation while we're under an emergency.
Declaration is so insensitive. People that have signed up to this afternoon to be able to speak, it seems that the, the majority of the commission. People that have signed up to uh this afternoon to be able to speak, it seems that the the majority of the commission. Uh, does not want to continue with the with debating the conference agenda items. Uh, we'll hopefully, I guess, we'll get to them at a future meeting. And and the and the community will be noticed as to those items. We will move forward, however, with the executive closed-door session at four thirty. And we'll also move forward with the evening meeting at six o'clock. So.
The CR, we had a CR V A meeting also scheduled. Is that also?
So you know, we got five minutes due to CRA meeting.
Yeah.
Are you?
There's one item on.
CRA meeting? Are any of you prepared for the CRA meeting?
One item.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Approve the services agreement and be done with it.
Commissioners, uh, Sturman, are you prepared for the CRA meeting?
Oh, yes. Thank you so much, Mayor. Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
How about you, Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Vice Mayor? Are you prepared for it?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll uh we'll take a recess from the uh from the conference meeting. And uh I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll for the Community Redevelopment Agency Board meeting.
Commissioner Hertz?
President.
Mr. Glassman?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sterling?
Uh, here.
Sounding spooky there, Vice Mayor.
The top between these two devices. We're working it out, though.
Okay, uh, okay, uh, I'm here. M one, motion approving the minutes for the April fourth, twenty twenty-three Community Redevelopment Agency Board meeting. Do I hear a motion to to approve? It's been a motion has been made to approve. Do I hear a second?
Fair second.
Okay, so who's the seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hertz?
Yes.
Mr. Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and M one's approved. M two, motion approving amendments to the services agreement between the city of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So.
Do I hear a second?
May I have a question on this?
Wait, 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 wait. Do I hear a second?
Second, second.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Greg or Clarence or whoever can answer this. Um, does this project, because I'm looking at the um, is this related to the two items tonight for the police substation for us paying rent to the uh to the Y?
Yes, this is.
Okay, so here's my problem with this. The city of Fort Lauderdale contributed what? I believe ten million dollars to the YMCA?
Approximately, yes.
What was the total? What was the total of the YMCA project, that building?
Clarence?
Clarence, do you have any information that you can share with us on the contribution by the city of this for the YMCA building?
Well, our contribution, I think, was ten million, but what was the total cost of the project?
Uh, yes.
So what was the contribution for the city and what was the total cost?
It it's ten million dollars.
And the total cost of the project?
Uh, was roughly around uh eighteen, almost twenty million.
Okay, so we had, we had over fifty mi- over fifty percent of the money contributed by the city to this structure. And then we gave to Broward, and then we gave to Broward College, what, another mil- another million to help put them into the building?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, we have spent a significant amount of money, and I think it's all well-spent. It's a magnificent structure. Incredible service to the community for the entire city. Here's my issue. So now we're being asked to open up a police station, substation. And pay the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the police substation. And then after our ten million dollar contribution, after our one million dollar contribution, and after now our two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar contribution. We're asked to pay rent to the Y on the substation. Folks, what are we crazy? This is absurd to me. I don't even understand why this has been brought to us in this form. Again, I don't want to have to repeat myself a million times, but we have spent a significant amount of money. We're building the police substation for the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the facility, and now we're gonna charge ourselves rent. Can someone help me understand the rationale?
All right, so I'm gonna ask uh police chief to come on. Um, right now, we're paying rent in an adjacent building and uh.
I don't care about that. I just want to understand. I but but we didn't pay over fifty percent of that adjacent building's cost. Now we're being asked to spend uh twenty thousand a year rent on a structure that we're paying for. And on an overall structure that we paid more than fifty percent of. I I think it's absurd.
In addition, Commissioner Glassman, we also contributed the land.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, oh, yes, and the land. So I am totally opposed to this because it makes no sense. I I don't even know. I mean, I can understand us maybe paying the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the police substation because I think it's needed. I think the one right now in the Myself First Funeral Home is outdated and not sufficient to meet the needs of today's policing. But I am not in favor of us paying rent on something that we're paying for. I just, I'd love to hear how everyone else feels, but I think it's absurd.
Well, as uh just just to uh participate in the conversations, Commissioner. Rent obviously goes towards upkeep, correct? And maintenance. So in terms of insurance and other maintenance costs. How would, how would the YMCA be able to uh secure the money for that but through rent?
Wait, how is it? Is that our issue? Is that our problem, Mayor?
Well, um, because the contribution that we made that was just described, the cost of the land, the uh the cost of the uh the bill, the building itself. Um, that's a capital.
Broward College.
Yeah, that's a capital cost. So it doesn't, doesn't address the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the building. So if we're gonna occupy it, um, you know, there's going to be uh an impact to the building. And just, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. I mean, how else?
So Mayor, let let me throw out a thought. But by us, by us stationing police offices there, it reduces the need for them to provide any security within the building. So that helps reduce some of their operating costs. So it 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 really is a bit of an offset in that respect. I I agree with Commissioner Glassman that um. You know, it it benefits the YMCA to have the police substation in the building. I mean, that's uh that's that's significant value having that located there. So I I would agree that us paying rent on top of positioning offices there, which, like I said, enhances the security and safety of. Of all the residents and the neighbors that come to use the facility. I think there's a ample benefit to the YMCA. For um for having them there. In every other area where people have to contract separately. For detail officers to provide that level of security. It's a significant expense to them. So in this case. They're getting the officers on site at uh, you know, at no cost to to themselves.
And Mayor, I would add that, out of that. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated for the police substation. About two hundred thousand of it was for the build-out, and twenty-five thousand of it was for us to even buy the furniture. So I mean, when you tell me what we're gonna worry about the maintenance. You know, if someone's gonna give me ten million dollars and million dollars and then all the land and then build me a police substation. I'm gonna say to them, you know what? I'll maintain it. Thanks. I'll I'll take care of it for you. I will, I'll clean it and I'll make sure everything looks good and whatever. But. I just think that we need to strike a better deal here for the city. Rather than that amount of rent paying on something that we paid for. I I, it's just not making any sense to me.
I have a question. Is this not what the fuse company is doing as well? Isn't this a? A similar or the same type of arrangement? Mr. Woods, if you can answer that question, please. The fuse company has um property at um in the city where the city is paying rent to the fuse company. Please explain, sir.
Yes. Yes, it is similar in some respects. Uh, we did give seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To them for the build-out of the the office space that we occupy right now. And uh, yes, we do pay rent.
And with.
How much was?
Department is getting service, getting um our police visibility in the community. I I've. I don't see the difference between the two.
I think, I think part of the difference.
Continue doing what we're doing.
But Vice Mayor, if I may, I think part of the difference is when we first. Did the deal with uh with with the previous owner, uh developer of that property. In order for that project to be successful, the CRA had to, you know, had to take on a a big part of the space. And guarantee the rent roll. And uh, that was actually part of the, you know, part of the subsidy to the project, if you will, the overall subsidy. So that that was, that was built into into the original terms of of that project in order for it to. Have any chance of being successful that the city was going to, the the CRA was going to to be a, you know, primary tenant.
Okay, but to this date, they still have not provided any services to the community. So this is a whole different.
This is now the second, well, Fuse Group is actually not the original developer. Fuse Group is the is the the second developer in that project.
Okay, all right. I'm I'm maybe not as informed as I need to be on that, but I'm seeing where we're already paying rent to one. Um, developer, one opportunity. And now with the YMCA, we're getting the police in service. So I'm trying to understand what the difference is.
And 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 actually, it was uh it was a significant concern at the time. It was something that was raised in the discussion points. About the fact that we provided a lot of the money for the build-out of the uh of the project. And at the same time, we were paying an above-market rate rent for that uh for that space. And the rationale is that the rent was really part of our overall contribution into the project to make it successful. And that was, so that project was originally done by RFP, and that was part of the RFP, the submittal that we got included that uh, you know, that uh that rented the space.
Uh, Commissioner Sturman, do you have any thoughts on this?
We can't see you, Commissioner Sturman.
Okay, now we can see. You're unmute. You have to unmute yourself. You have to unmute yourself.
I think Steve brings up, I mean, I had the same thought as Steve had. So um. Um, I I just, I had the same same inclination that Steve had with that.
All right, well, um, okay, well, we'll take a vote. I happen to agree with, I I happen to think that uh it's a little different situation and I would be supportive of. Of paying the rent, but uh uh I, but. You know, I don't, I think that the initial contribution was the capital contribution. And I don't think uh we're taking into consideration what it means to be a tenant. I don't think that the that YMCA is really the direct benefit of the police substation here. I think they're just. I think that the community is the direct benefit. Um, and and if we want to change the location of an existing police substation to to relocate in the YMCA. It's to our benefit, not necessarily to the YMCA. It's also increases the the availability and access to the community. Uh, but, you know, the the tax, the the insurance still has to be paid. Uh, the maintenance still has to be paid. And uh, you're saying that that somehow. You know, that should be deducted from the uh capital contribution we made. It 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 just doesn't, it it doesn't, you know, make sense to me, and I I think it takes away from. What we're, what we should be providing to that community. So I I'm supportive of uh the vice mayor, but we're gonna take a vote and we'll see where it goes. Um, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Wait, uh, is any further comments or questions to you?
I mean, I just, just to be clear, the dollar amount's only twenty thousand a year.
The other amount.
I don't have the lease in front of me. It won't pull up.
Mr. Hunter, can you share again?
The um, the annual um. Uh, rent's gonna be twenty thousand, six hundred.
So it's about fifteen hundred dollars, not even fifteen hundred dollars a month. How many square feet? How many square feet is that?
Chief, how how many square feet is that?
Uh, I think it's eight hundred and twenty-four square feet. It's if you could envision the YMCA building. It's the first floor corner office on the west side of the building.
Okay. You know, I support the vice mayor's position, so uh let's just take a, I'll take a, um, take a vote on it. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hertz?
You gotta take yourself off mute.
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Vice Chair Beasley, Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
And for twenty thousand dollars, I'll say yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes. So the motion's approved. Any further business of the CRA? There'll be no further business. That meeting is concluded and uh we should take a five-minute break before we go with the executive session.
Can we just go ahead?
Oh, we, yeah.
So you have the script? And and I have a card here. I have to add one more case to it. So according to Florida statute section two eighty-six point zero one one eight eight. I'm seeking advice on the following matters. Uh, for the city of Fort Lauderdale versus five hundred Hendrix LLC, case number. Four D two three six seven one during the city commission regular meeting. Uh, April eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, at a time to be determined. Present in the attorney-client session will be Mayor Dean J. Trentalis, Vice Mayor Pamela Beasley Pittman. Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Steve Glassman, Commissioner Warren Sturman, City Manager Greg Chavaria. Interim City Attorney Dwayne Spence, outside counsel Michael T. Burke, Esquire. Certified court reporter Bailey. Attend court reporting. Estimated length of this session will be approximately twenty minutes.
Okay, so in the in the agenda itself, there are already three cases. In my announcements, it lists. Two cases plus the one you just added. So which one I'll be eliminating here. So what you just added.
Yeah, your announcement's correct. Go ahead.
Oh, there are three here, noticed.
So we, this this one has been dismissed um because of uh. The the court has dismissed that matter.
Oh, listen, Dean, Dean, are we, is this a closed door? Is this closed?
Not yet, not yet. I, you know, just just getting clarification.
Yeah, okay.
I announced both of them while they were pending.
Okay. At this time, the city commission shall be privately to conduct discussions between the city manager, the city attorney, and the city commission relative to pending litigation. Pursuant to section two eight six point zero one one, grants eight Florida statutes in connection with the following matters. Stephen Nagy uh versus eighteen thirteen North Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard. Uh, city of Fort Lauderdale versus five hundred Hendrix LLC. As the city of Fort Lauderdale versus Terminal Ventures. Present at the attorney-client session will be myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis, Vice Mayor Pamela Beasley Pittman. Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Warren Sturman, City Manager Greg Chavaria. Interim City Attorney Dwayne Spence, outside counsel Michael Burke. Uh, Edward Dion. And certified court reporter from Bailey, enter court reporting. The estimated length of this attorney-client session is approximately twenty minutes. Um, but. Well, we'll take a, I'll take a five-minute break and we'll.
I could go, I could. I could go through. I could go on. We could get this done.
Does. I want a five-minute break. It's not up to you, Warren, okay?
So there is a separate link for the closed-door session. This link will remain live as we have to come back and read and close the session here. Um, so you should have a separate link to go to. If you would go to that link at this time, and we'll join you there after the break.
Mayor, Mayor, are you, are you going to tell the fifty or sixty people, whoever it is that have been waiting all afternoon, that we're not? Doing the rest of the agenda so they don't have to hang around?
I just did. I did before. Had that other conversation. So.
Some people, some people are texting me. It wasn't clear, so I'm asking.
Okay, I'll announce it again. The the commission, uh, the majority of the commission has decided that. The agenda items, the rest of the agenda items on the conference committee agenda should be postponed to a future date. We will notice those items at a future uh notice that uh we will publish. But uh, I apologize for all of you that plan to speak and attend uh on those items, and we'll try to get to them at a future time.
Yes, I also apologize, Mayor, to the residents, uh, participants that planned on attending and have been here for a couple of hours and. Thought they were gonna speak and thought that we were gonna have an agenda as was published. And so I also want to apologize for that. Thank you.
Okay, do we, do we leave this link and go to another link now or what do we do?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. Uh, you should have a a separate link that was sent to your offices. If you if you can confirm with me that you all have that.
David, could you send me, could you send me the link?
I'll take a five-minute break. Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you very much.